Good evening. Today is Thursday, March 23rd, 2023, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience here this evening, as well as anybody who may be watching from home. Director Miller, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one note before we get started this evening. We will be taking a 15-minute break at approximately 7:30. The 15-minute recess at approximately 7:30 this evening. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. A move by Director Chester, seconded by Director Mersal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda, we have the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, and we will receive a report about the world's best workforce, college and career readiness, and graduation rates from Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Brandon Lowe, CISA Coordinator, Colleen Coleman, Continuous Improvement Coach, and Molly, I apologize.
Bosu.
Bosu? Thank you, Social Studies teacher. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Belmont, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share this report update on the world's best workforce goals focused on students completing their educational journey with us. Tonight, we will review the goals of the World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Plan. Integration Plan provides you with information around two indicators of the district strategic roadmap, graduation, and the enrollment and completion of rigorous coursework at Burnsville High School, and share the perspectives and voices of two teachers from Burnsville High School on their experiences with Avid schoolwide. First, a brief reminder of the world's best workforce goals that all students are ready for career and college, and all students graduate. These two state goals, to achieve these two state goals, we also use the lens of our achievement and integration of racial and economic integration and equitable educational opportunities. And we will be sharing some key data points about these. Looking at the trend in four-year graduation rates from the past three years, we see very little change in the overall percentage of students graduating on time. The numbers continue to sit in about the 85%, 84%, and 86% graduation rate. The graduating classes of 2020 and 2021 were seniors during the pandemic and received significant instruction through virtual in-person hybrid model with very little impact on their graduation rates. A reminder that this board has continued to support credit recovery and the student success teams and supports that are in place at the high school to assist students in meeting their goals to graduate on time. While there are few impacts on the overall rates, Burnsville High School did see some significant gains in some areas of student demographic groups, such as the 91% grad rate for Black and African-American students and a growth of 6% for a four-year graduation rate from the prior year for our Latino students. While graduation rates are one indicator for the strategic roadmap, Strategy III, supporting and leveraging innovation to improve student outcomes and district culture, another indicator, the enrollment in rigorous coursework, is what happens along the way to graduation. Students may engage in rigorous coursework in multiple ways: advanced placement, dual enrollment, post-secondary enrollment options, or PSEO. And for the purposes of this report, a course is considered rigorous if it provides the opportunity to earn college credit. Tonight, I invite Dr. Lowe to share the story of who's enrolled in these rigorous courses, what they choose to enroll in, and how they performed in those courses. Dr. Brandon Lowe.
Lou, thank you, board. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to really get into this and talk about data points. We appreciate the opportunity a lot. So, as you can see here, when we looked at students which were taking rigorous courses, we noticed a clear disparity between racial composition of BHS as a whole and the racial composition of students in rigorous classes. We continue to this point to have a disparity of enrollment in rigorous courses, which means we have to take specific actions to both minimize that disparity and to encourage more students overall to take rigorous courses and support them in those courses. So there's a lot of data points here on this slide, so I encourage you to take some time with it. But on this one, you can see that the student composition in rigorous courses didn't accurately represent the composition of our student body as a whole. So on the previous slide, that was students who chose to take a rigorous course. Now on this slide, this is the composition of students in rigorous courses. So you can see on the main pie chart in the middle that while Black and Latino students are still underrepresented, our enrollment by ethnicity is becoming more representative of BIPOC students overall, meaning that those classes are becoming more diverse. You can also see on the right-hand side that other delineated groups, you know, we consider that as well. We want to know about our students who receive special education services. We want to know about our students who receive multilingual support services. So you can see on that side, on the right-hand side, that 1% of students in rigorous courses qualified for special education services. Now, that should be juxtaposed to 15% of our student body receives special education services. So 1% in rigorous courses, but we have 15% overall in our student body. With, it says ELL, we're talking about students who receive multilingual services. 2% of students in rigorous courses qualify for those services, but 17% of our student population receive multilingual services. And then on the bottom pie chart, we have 23% of students in rigorous courses qualify for free or reduced-price lunch, but 42% of our overall students qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. And so, you know, we can see by all of this that lots of work, you know, needs to continue to be done. We will continue paying attention to this data. So, we ask ourselves, what courses are students taking to receive graduation credit? Because ultimately, you know, high school is about graduating high school first, before post-secondary credit. So in this graph, you can see that certain core graduation requirements were being met by different types of rigorous courses. So most frequent among both AP and CIS, college and schools courses, were social studies graduation requirements. And then with Enver Hill's courses, specifically, English graduation requirements were being met. So if you're like me, you want to know the outcome. How did students do? And we can dig into this a lot. There's a lot to kind of process. But a significant point of celebration that this graph tells us is students performed well. Students performed really, really well in our rigorous coursework. And you can see here that if we're looking at CIS, so the first column, college and the schools, 97% of the time, credit was obtained. So you see the number 319. Those are the students that were eligible to receive credit. And then you have like the number 1 down at the bottom. Those are, that's kind of represented technically in a way that it's expressive of when the credit goes on the student's transcript. But if we're looking at a successful outcome of that course, we lump together the 319 and the 1, because those are the students who will receive credit for, you know, post-secondary credit for that class upon graduation. So percentage-wise, the first column, 97% of the time, credit was obtained by the student in CIS courses. In the second column, that's the Enver Hill's courses, that's 98% of the time, students are receiving post-secondary credit. On the third column, PSEO, this is 96% of the time, students are receiving credit. So the vast majority of the time in all three of those areas, students are receiving college credit, post-secondary credit, for participation in those. Now, when we look at AP, you know, that is for consideration. The question is, you know, is the ultimate goal of an AP course post-secondary credit? And if that is the only goal of that course, then I think we would take a step back and say, hmm, is this the avenue? Is this the route that we should go? But if we look at AP courses being, you know, being important in other ways and for other reasons, then I think that, you know, taking that nuanced approach really does show you the value of AP courses. When we talk about AP in amongst our group, it's more about AP providing rigorous course opportunities, providing, you know, more rigorous opportunities in a class to go deeper with the subject, to develop skills that learners in post-secondary opportunities or in post-secondary schools need. So while we might not be getting those AP scores back when the students take the AP test, you see that many of them didn't opt to even take the AP exam. We do have to consider that, you know, oftentimes, an AP course is part of a pathway to a CIS course or to a PSEO course later on in high school. So when graduates go to post-secondary institutions, many colleges or universities require students to demonstrate proficiency in fundamental reading, writing, and math skills. Students that can't meet that minimum proficiency standard of the college or university are required to take developmental courses. Now, taking a rigorous course in high school prepares students for success in college, and it lessens the chance they will be required to enroll in the developmental courses that I'm talking about. Now, you can see on this graph that graduates from BHS and from our district at large were required to take developmental courses at approximately the same rate as the rest of the state of Minnesota. In 2018, 23% of BHS graduates were required by the college of their enrollment to take one or more developmental courses. In 2019, 17% were, and 2020, 18% were. And then in 2021, the most recent year of our data, 8% were. Only 8% were required to take developmental courses. So we offer lots of rigorous opportunities in our district. If we can increase the number of students, we can support post-secondary success. More rigor in classes, more access to rigorous coursework in our high schools can lead to fewer enrollments in developmental courses when students go on to their next step. So, as we continue to target disparities of rigorous course enrollment with the knowledge of how well our students are doing, we also want to make sure that we are providing access to as many students as possible and also to make sure that our rigorous course enrollment represents our student population. So this requires attention to our middle school feeder program. And we know that students who enroll in AP and honors courses in ninth grade continue that same track, that same progression, and enroll in CIS and PSEO, Enver Hill's courses later in their, you know, high school trajectory. So we're paying very close attention to ninth graders. That's really where we are focusing a lot of our energies right now, is looking at that eighth to ninth grade transition and what those students are enrolling in whenever they get into ninth grade. So middle school administrators have been working very closely with BHS administrators, paying attention to AP and honors course registration demographics. In underrepresented areas, middle school administrators are engaging with teachers to encourage underrepresented groups of students to challenge themselves. You know what, you can do it. You might not have signed up for AP Human Geography, but I think you can do it. And it's that encouragement, that, you know, current teacher to their student in the classroom that we're seeing the greatest effect on getting students to take a serious step into a rigorous course. And during the pandemic, we saw students opt out of taking rigorous courses at pretty significant levels. But now, we are back to pre-pandemic levels of rigorous course enrollment. You can see in those numbers that are there that in 2019, 20, 32% of ninth graders were enrolled in rigorous courses. That went down during the pandemic quite a bit. But next year, next year's ninth grade class, based on current registrations, 37% of ninth graders will enroll in rigorous courses. So we are even above, slightly above, pre-pandemic levels at this point. So this year, also to support students in their rigorous course enrollment, those eighth to ninth grade transition students, this year, we're offering a three-week summer Avid Boot Camp program to ensure that all students entering ninth grade are prepared for rigorous high school courses. We're focusing with the program on organization skills, study skills, critical thinking strategies. And we're also working on building their collaborative skills and collaboration with one another through different relational capacity activities, just helping them know how to be a high school student and know how to work with other high school students in a way that will allow them to engage in rigorous course content. So our focus is on preparing students with the skills necessary to be successful in high school-level rigorous coursework and expose them to what the high school experience will look like for them. For this program, we are working alongside Lakeville. They are bringing some staff in. We have our staff and Lakeville students and Burnsville students will participate in the program together.
This board has heard multiple reports on the Avid program. The ongoing support from the board and the administration of the school district has made Avid a very strong center standard for our secondary buildings. Tonight, we want to highlight the next level of Avid implementation, which extends the reach and the benefits of Avid to all students, and it's Avid schoolwide. The Avid elective program recruits students who are performing in the academic middle, your average student with a desire to grow their skills and participate in college preparatory work. It is a very narrow focus. The research on the Avid elective is strong, improved academic outcomes and graduation rates for the students that fit that specific profile. The graduation rate for our Avid elective students continues to stand at 100%. However, there are many more students who do not fit that specific Avid profile. Avid challenges schools to infuse their entire school with the Avid strategies and practices beyond the Avid elective. Our Avid leaders have made the connection of these strategies and practices to our district core values of cultural proficiency, student agency, and future readiness. Avid schoolwide reaches into all classrooms, Algebra II, AP Chemistry, English Language Arts 10. Teachers in all classes receive professional development and resources to bring the Avid critical reading, writing, and reasoning skills to their instruction. Discussion and inquiry protocols support student voice and agency. Each year, our Avid sites participate in an external certification. Setting up and nurturing the Avid elective program is just the baseline. Right now, Burnsville High School, along with our other three sites, are also seeking their certification levels for Avid schoolwide. Moving from emerging to an established and sustainable Avid schoolwide implementation is the goal. Tonight, we have two high school teachers here to share their experiences in moving to the schoolwide implementation for Avid.
All right, Dr. Belmont, members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Molly Bosu, and I'm a social studies teacher at Burnsville High School. So I teach AP Human Geography, Human Geography, and Success 191. So I teach all ninth grade students, this year at least. Hi.
Oh, here, I can introduce myself.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so what I'm going to talk about tonight is the ways in which I've kind of infused Avid strategies into my core classroom. And so particularly, WICHER strategies. And so when we take a look at like WICHER strategies, as we're going to talk about a little bit on this slide, WICHER stands for writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading. And so when we think about these strategies, these are just like strategies that teachers do, right? But the ways in which the Avid training that I've received through professional development and workshops have really made me think about these five, like, kind of core strategies, these kind of key elements in different ways. And so through the training I've received, it's really made me think about how do I want to diversify the use of these strategies in my classroom? They offer a lot of different strategies, or AVID just has kind of a whole toolkit of different strategies that kind of fit within each of these elements. And it's made me think about, how do I diversify the ways in which I already do things with that AVID lens? And then also, it's made me analyze the strategies I already use and make sure that I'm using them in ways that are really, you know, I'm using them with integrity, I guess you could say. So all of this has increased the rigor in my classroom. And so on this slide, I have some examples of ways in which I've used these WICHER strategies in my classroom, so I'll kind of go through some of them. In terms of writing and organization, one strategy that I've received quite a bit of training on, and I was actually able to be a facilitator for an AVID workshop in January, is focused note-taking. And so in my AP Human Geography classroom, students have a textbook, and a lot of our note-taking is out of their textbook. So I ask my students to take notes. But the focused note-taking strategy isn't just about the students taking notes, but it's really all about the whole, like, spectrum of, you know, what types of notes, how are we going to set up those notes? But then what are we going to do with those notes? And so the training I received for focused note-taking has made me really think about, what am I actually asking my students to do when they take notes? How are they going to process those notes? And then, how do I make sure that they're making connections between the notes that they're taking and the things we've already learned, the examples they see in the text, and all that, those sorts of things? And through this AVID training, it's really made me evolve the ways I'm asking my students to take notes. And I know it's going to constantly evolve as I see what really works well for my students and what doesn't work well. In terms of collaboration, you know, collaboration, asking students to collaborate with each other, I do this through a number of ways, but the content, or like, just some of the AVID strategies really make me consider, you know, when I'm asking my students to collaborate, making sure that they really know what that means. You know, what does that look like? What does, you know, if I'm asking them to, for example, do a peer review of written work, how do they, you know, how do they know exactly what the role is? And so it's really stretched me to make sure that I'm setting up those structures so students know exactly what that looks like. In terms of inquiry and reading, and a lot of these just overlap in general, as you can see, but inquiry and reading, I've already kind of talked about how, you know, my AP students are really reading a textbook. My other students are reading articles, they're reading text. But making sure that I'm allowing them and I'm kind of pushing them to really ask those questions. What is the perspective that they're looking at? What perspectives are maybe lacking? And so the other ways in which we think about reading in a geography classroom, I'm not just asking my students to read text, but I'm asking them to read things like maps and graphs and data. And so really pushing them at those higher-level inquiry questions. One question being things like, if we're looking at this, you know, we want to analyze it, but what are the limitations of what we're looking at? You know, if we're trying to understand a particular phenomenon, how does this data not tell us the full story? What other types of things do we need? So those types of inquiry questions are really important to get students to really critically think. And then lastly, Socratic seminars. And so Socratic seminars are something that I kind of dabbled in throughout my entire career, but using like the AVID focus. The Socratic seminars, I've infused into every single one of my classes, get students to answer questions, to think at higher levels. But ultimately, I think true inquiry would look like the students asking their own questions. And through Socratic seminars and the Socratic seminar method, we're starting to get the students there, where they're starting to ask their own questions. And that's, I think, what true inquiry will look like. So obviously, I've talked a lot about my AP Human Geography classroom, and I kind of think about that a lot when I look at these. But this goes beyond just the challenging course of an AP classroom. Through my collaborative teams with Success 191, we are, as a group, you know, creating these strategies. We've created Socratic seminars for Success 191, for our on-level classes. We have made sure that when we are looking at organization, we're thinking about how do students digitally organize, which I think is really important in this day and age. And then making sure that when we're asking students to really read anything, that we're thinking about what AVID strategy would fit best with this. And so WICHER has not only impacted the rigor in our most challenging courses, but I think it's impacted all across the board. And so I do think that every Burnsville student is being impacted by this.
Hello, my name is Colleen Coleman, and I was a social studies teacher for 21 years at the high school. And now I've had the privilege, the last year and a half, of being a continuous improvement coach at the high school and at the alternative high school. So the great gift of that is that I get to go into so many classrooms and work with teachers and see what they're doing. So I have always sung the praise of ISD 191, but now in this role, I feel like I can do it with a broader lens because I get to see all the amazing work that's happening. What I wanted to do is just highlight one way that we've been sort of expanding AVID schoolwide, and that is through the 191 AVID WICHER Academy. So Daniel Christie helped organize this. And there was a series of 10 workshops. They were optional, they were after school. But I think the real, like, magic of these workshops is that they were facilitated by our own staff. And so like, for example, Molly came in and did one on focused note-taking, and she could share what she was doing, and other teachers, it was, and all secondary teachers were invited, could share what they were doing, could share strategies, could ask questions. And so we had all these ways to kind of spread. You know, I think teachers are such a great resource for each other, and we had this WICHER academy where we could all learn how teachers are using these WICHER strategies in their classroom, teach each other, learn from each other. And so I really, I got to experience quite a few of these and just see like how powerful they were. Before I talk about a couple of specific things, I just wanted to mention, you know, I think one theme that's come up a couple of times is the pandemic and how that impacted our students. And, you know, when I'm talking to teachers every day, I feel like we're still kind of, feel like students are still coming back. And one of the great things about these WICHER strategies is these really hone in on the skills that we're trying to, you know, kind of rebuild in our students. For example, collaboration is a big one. Like, how do we get kids to be talking to each other, right? And I think one thing we see often is that we have to provide a structure for them to talk to each other. And, you know, we have, it doesn't always just, it doesn't always just happen, right? There are ways that we can really make like that powerful learning happen through collaboration. And, you know, how do we get kids to really think again, right? We don't want them just, I mean, there's a time to Google, but we really want kids thinking, and so I think the focus on inquiry. So when I think about kind of the issues that teachers are talking about, the WICHER strategies really help, you know, they're kind of powerful tools to meet those student needs. So just going back to the academy, for example, I was, we, there was one at the alternative high school where students got together, and the focus was, what is rigor, right? Rigor doesn't just mean hard. And so students, we brought examples of student work, we brought examples of what people were doing in classrooms, and teachers were able to share ideas and brainstorm. You know, how can we make our classes more rigorous? I had the opportunity to facilitate one of these sessions at the high school, and it was on inquiry, how do we get students to think? And really looking at Costa's level of questioning. And so how do we, you know, kind of start here and keep building on students' thinking? And what was really, you know, I was, I'm very fortunate in my role is that then, after I got to facilitate that session, I got to facilitate that session, I got to partner with some of the teachers and see the work they were doing in their classroom based on that session we had had. So we had the session on inquiry, and then I was able to partner with a science teacher at Boz, and she had this great idea for labs. She wanted to use the Costa's level of questioning to have her students brainstorm a word bank that they were going to keep like posted in their room, so when they're during, doing their labs, they're really being conscious to like, you know, be moving up the Costa's level. I got to also partner with a social studies teacher from the high school who said, you know, like my economic students really struggle with market structures, and how can I make this, you know, how can I use inquiry to really help them see, like really think about it and see all the ways that, that it is relevant to their lives and sort of applicable and not this kind of economics far-off concept? And so I really had an opportunity to see how this Avid WICR Academy then translated to like real, you know, actionable items in the classroom and, and really like impacting our students and what they were doing and their learning. So I think the one thing I just want to say to sort of close is that I think teachers are always wanting to learn and always wanting to grow, and this is kind of a, like a really great basis point, that we can come together around this common set of ideas and share what we're doing in the classroom and learn from each other and keep building on what we know are best practices for our students. Thank you.
So the line we want to draw for you tonight is really taking a look at that end product, which is students who are graduating on time, students who are earning college credits while they're in the high school and meeting their graduation requirements, knowing that we might still have, that we do still have almost 60 to 70% of our students who are not engaged in, in these kind of more rigorous course or college credit-bearing courses, but to draw that line through and say, how do we increase the students' capacity and their belief and hope that they are capable of doing that work? And then connecting that to the strategies that we're using as we are helping our teachers learn and expanding that Avid support to all of our students and all of the classrooms that are there, giving them those opportunity to live out our core values at the same time, increasing the rigor of their experience. Not every student has to take a college preparatory course. There are lots of choices and lots of other options that students can do at our high school. We want to make sure that the door is open, we want to make sure that the support is there, and teachers like Molly and Colleen and the teachers with whom they work are working very hard to make sure that those show up in every single classroom that students are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, are there any comments or questions? Can't leave yet.
Dr. Connor, welcome, by the way.
Yes, hi, I had a couple of questions. Do, is, I noticed in your presentation, and I may have missed it, but I only saw ninth grade, so are you only offering Avid to ninth graders now? Ninth, you know, nine through 12?
So Avid elective is available nine through 12. Molly just represents ninth grade because that's the class, grade that she teaches, but the work that she's doing happens at all, all levels, nine through 12.
Okay, great, because I know previously they did all from sixth, seventh, and eighth. So that's good. I think it should focus more on the older kids. And what was my other question? And you still have Avid tutors?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, too.
Other comments?
And Board Chair, I would just add, Director Connor, the, the Avid still exists in the middle level, two, six, 17, so.
Thank you for that. Dr. Mellor.
Thank you for joining us this evening and your time. Thank you. Couple things, well, I'll start at the top and work my way down. So there's a, we have a couple of slides that reference the four-year graduation rate, but maybe I am oversimplifying this, but I only see three years listed here. Is there a reason why, if the title says four-year graduation rate, we're?
Yeah, it's the four-year graduation rate, it's the percentage of students who graduate within the four years.
Got it, yes, I'm sorry. I think I may have asked that question a year ago, probably.
Make it a tradition.
Okay. Then, you know, one of the things I'm very proud about our district is the amount of rigorous courses, college credit courses we offer here, and I'm, I'm pleased with the amount of research we're doing into the attendance and the efforts to spread that opportunity to all of our student body. And I, you know, I do recognize probably a significant part of the reason that we have some of these disparity numbers in the attendance is, is around the sort of expected socioeconomic backgrounds, the family backgrounds, et cetera. But I would challenge that there's all, we also have some opportunity on making the classwork available just in general and knowledge of it, and I'm experiencing this directly right now as a parent. If I go to our handbook, I engaged, you know, counseling at the school about where we were in the process, I was directed to the handbook online, it's, there is a sort function that says college credits, but then it's hard to tell what grades available. It would be really handy if there was just a simple map, a single sheet or tear sheet that said, you know, you're headed to this grade, these would be the classes you could take, they're going to conflict timewise with these courses, so don't look, you know, just some feedback, that would be a lot easier to deal with. Okay. Switching down to the, the bar chart with, the stacked bar chart with the results on the different levels of rigorous coursework outcome, titled rigorous coursework outcomes. I understand the com, well, first of all, just to clarify, eligible credit versus earned credit, sound like you're using that synonymously, is that, is essentially the same?
It's a very, it's, it's when it goes on their transcript, so it's kind of like whether it's earned or whether it's eligible.
But it's resulting in a credit is the end, okay. So I mean, I, I understand the explanation around the AP bar chart, I, I still though am fairly concerned about the, the amount of students, A, that are not receiving any credit, and I'll come back to that, but then even if we look at the ones that opted to take the test and then did not pass, the other bars, we're getting something, I think you were 90 some percent, I didn't run the math, but this one, I did run the math, it was like 78% response, or return on the AP. And I don't know if that's a place of worry, that is obviously a much considerable lower participation number, so maybe the, it's skewed slightly by a couple of particular outcomes, but something to think about. But I am, I'm curious about the did not test. I mean, are we, do we have opportunity there maybe to try to encourage testing? I, I know there's some barriers around getting to the test and, you know, it's off, it's, it is off-site, right, I believe? No, it's administered onsite now?
Do you mind if I answer a question? Okay, thank you. So from my perspective, at least from a social studies perspective, I'm not as familiar with the other content areas, the way that the social studies AP courses work, so in freshman and sophomore years, so ninth grade and 10th grade, our social studies courses are offered, sorry, our AP courses are offered as just AP courses, because you cannot take a CIS course until you're a junior or a senior. And so at that point, so our junior level social studies course is American History, and that is offered as an AP slash CIS course, and so are the senior level courses. So when students get to, so as a freshman and sophomore, the only way for students to earn college credit from an AP course is to take the AP exam. And so in my AP Human Geography class, the vast majority of students are taking the exam. However, when you get to be a junior, many students are choosing to opt out of the AP exam because they're already earning the CIS credit. And so that, I think, is what is being reflected in that bar graph, which I don't think was fully.
No, that's very helpful, thank you, it makes, makes sense.
So it doesn't necessarily mean that they're opting not to get college credit, they're earning it in other ways.
Yep, no, I totally get it. And from what I've heard, not necessarily your, but the, the AP geography one that we do offer to freshmen who arguably probably are the least ready to take a AP test, right, is one of the more rigorous AP classes we offer at the high school, right? That's what I've been anecdotally told. So I, you know, I understand all those factors going into the, into the calculation, okay. The next, on the post-secondary developmental course line chart, I'm curious how we're, if I understand what we're saying here is, these, these are students that have graduated, gone on, entered into secondary program work and are found to have needed further development courses. How are we gathering that information? That's a.
That's a really good question. We get the information from the Department of Education, and what it does is it tracks it through the SLEDs program, and so universities and colleges are reporting that information to MDE.
Are they, is there a need for identification, do the students have to identify that they had, or do they just somehow tie back, they said they, they took this course, they came from Burnsville, we're going to report it back into the system? I'm just curious if, what the end value of this chart is, to be honest? I, I wonder if there's a, a low number involved in this, you know?
Well, it, it does have the percentages only, it doesn't give us the numbers, and part of it is, is that when students enter into the university, they do have their high school identified with that, along with their high school transcripts, and so that information is available to them, and so part of what the SLEDs does is, is kind of comb through and mine through that, that data that gets reported from the higher institutions.
Interesting, okay. Last, I wanted to talk a little bit about Avid. Again, I think we have an opportunity from, anecdotally from my experience to, you know, engage with all students on this. Again, experienced some interaction with this recently, where my child was invited to join Avid, given a, a great email and with lots of bullet points, which was a little intimidating for an 11-year-old to understand what was even being presented to her, right? And, and when I inquired as to, you know, why maybe that conversation didn't start at least mutually with the parents, I was informed that, that the parents are engaged when they sign the form at the end, and that there's not, I mean, and this feels like something that would be a great, you know, conversational tool, and, you know, my child is probably not the demonstration of what really, you know, would be the most challenging to get to and interact with and engage in Avid. So I get concerned because it's probably exponentially going to get tougher. So I would encourage us to, this, I think this is a, I am a strong supporter of Avid, and I think it's a great tool we've made available, but if, if we're gauging students, I, I think it's a great time to be engaging the families also, and, and letting them know what the, the opportunities and what would be involved and all that, so they can sit down and talk to the child about it.
And there's, I think you're right, I think the conversations most definitely need to involve the parents. I, I do know that part of the AVID acronym is Advanced via Individual Determination, and so part of it is also making sure that we're engaging the student, that the student wants to participate, and that their parents aren't making them do that.
Yeah, understandable.
And so, because the, the, the data is really clear, is that if students are not the ones who choose, then the program really isn't effective for them. And so I don't think, though, invitations need to go out without the consultation of the parents, and so I would agree that we need to more, more robustly engage our families when we do those inviting.
All right. Well, that, again, my thanks to you guys for your time tonight, that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I guess the.
The, the thing that I was circling back on was that like the, it's encouragement from the current teacher to take the harder courses, is that like mostly the aim? Because like ultimately, you know, the students are picking their courses, and like, I remember sitting down in my class this first semester, and a girl had said, it's all the same white kids in these classes, which is, it's kind of true, you know, like we, we do, you do see that. And it's like, but if people are choosing their classes, like how do we do more than just, I guess, encourage? Or maybe I'm just misinterpreted other things, but I guess is encouragement the only thing that can be done?
Again, the answer to your question is yes and no. Yes, students do have to choose, and they do have to be engaged in that, and I think encouragement might be the soft way for us to talk about that, but part of it is also building up the confidence of the students. And so part of that encouragement is making sure that they're getting the message of, oh, not just, I want you to take this class, I think you'd be good at it, but to offer that ongoing support that says, look at the work that you've done so far, look at how you're engaging in it. And the feeder program from our middle school also begins even with like our sixth grade and our seventh grade students, and the opportunity for them to engage in embedded honors and to select some of those higher level things and to practice those. But in the end, it really is the student who, who chooses, and I think there's also a systemic piece that's, that's there, and I think that there is a perception and a belief that these courses aren't for me, I don't see people like me teaching these courses, I don't see people like me taking these courses, and so I'm not so sure I want to be the Jackie Robinson of AP chemistry. And so, and it, it really becomes important for us to be very thoughtful about that and to perhaps think about how do we encourage students to, in cohorts, to participate in those courses? But you're nodding your head when I said systemic, so.
Right, because I was kind of thinking like, we should be posing the question of like, why do some students feel less comfortable signing up for those courses than others, which is exactly what you got at, too? So, yeah, I think that's just like a, a good focus question for us, is because like no student should feel, which I guess is our goal in general, but no student should feel uncomfortable signing up for a course, or, because like truly, there's, people have so, people have such similar capabilities, looking so different. So like I just, I, I never understood that personally, it's like if you, anyone can choose to take these classes, why, why are they all, like why, why do I see so many of the same white kids in the classes, too? So, yeah.
If I can add to that, I think the, that really a recent change, maybe since, from when you registered for, for ninth grade, or how we've done it historically, is that, you know, in the past, high school counselors would go to the middle schools and give presentations, and then students would sign up using, you know, a variety of different, a variety of different methods. This year, we shifted away from that. The high school counselors didn't go to the middle schools this year, but rather, the middle school teachers were trained on what offerings existed, how to have conversations, what were the rigorous opportunities, because those eighth-grade teachers are the ones who are with the students every day, they know their capabilities, they have that relationship with them, and so that, I feel like, has been a, something that has really demonstrated a high level of effectiveness with next year's, you know, enrollment in rigorous courses for ninth grade. The fact that we were able to kind of surpass pre-COVID rigorous course enrollment, I think is a real testament to just that small shift in the structure of having teachers have the conversations with the students rather than, you know, a counselor that they don't know, that maybe this is my first time seeing them, and then, you know, they're gone, and I'm, I might see them again in a couple of years. I think that has been just one small change that we've seen have a really heavy impact this year.
I think we also want to look at how we're in, how we might be engaging our student leaders of color and making sure that they can help share some of their experiences with our rising ninth graders.
Thank you.
Director Chester, please.
So kind of bringing these two together, so one of the things that I'm wondering about is, I know that it needs to be student-directed, you know, it helps if a student is wanting to seek this out, and at the same time, going back to what Director Miller was challenging out, is parents need to be educated about the benefits of CIS early on.
Yes.
So that they can encourage their child, realizing they're not going to maybe, there might be some parents who push their children, but, but for the most part, that, that, that communication can be happening in the home as well, because yes, you can, you can hear from a, a teacher of encouragement or something, but if a parent can really understand its value and, and understand, like, okay, if you start here and thinking about the possibilities post-secondary, because this is a goal of yours, I want to support you, let's, let me be educated as a parent, too. Where I work outside of here, we're actually having those meetings with parents to encourage and help educate about AP and CIS and, and stuff, because one of our measurements where I work is how many students are enrolled in honors-type courses, because that's a, a success indicator for us. And so that's, we realize sometimes it has to start with, with encourage, that, that family engagement.
Yeah, and we've heard that again and again from our advisory groups, it's like parents sharing, I didn't realize that that was an opportunity. I didn't realize that that was, it was a no-cost opportunity, that it was something that any student could sign up for, that there were no barriers to that. And so just making sure that some parents are coming from a perspective in which you had to score a certain way to sign up for a class, or you had to have a certain recommendation and all of those other types of things, and we've worked really, really hard with our administrators to eliminate those kinds of gatekeeping barriers in as many places as we possibly can, and, and I think making sure that we're communicating that very clearly and early with our parents will make a difference.
Yeah, I think that would be great. And then also piggybacking Director Miller's, with the percentage of graduates with the percentage of graduates enrolled in developmental courses, I had a, a question too, because, and I think some of, I've heard it referred to as like a clearinghouse of information that you get access to, to get all that student data after high school. I'm wondering how many of our students actually enroll post-secondary, and if you're seeing a, a gap year? So that we might have students, we have 8% that need developmental courses, but really do we need more if students haven't really actually enrolled yet, and having, and having a gap year? Because I know because of the pandemic, there is a trend of so many more students doing that gap year still.
I don't think I know the answer to that question, and I would have to go back into the data set to see when they go back, how do they update that data?
Yeah.
From year to year?
Yeah.
If that, if that number for 2019 stays static, or if that updates? And what the parameters are on that, I just don't think I know.
Sorry. I'm done.
Sorry, just one more thing I wanted to add. Excuse me, I was just a little surprised about that parents aren't aware of the Avid program, because I, when I tutored it, I was in, just in the middle school, and so a lot of them, since they start at sixth grade, which, it was a little early, but from sixth, seventh, and eighth, they already know about the program by the time they get to ninth, and that's when, and they, in, in those, in seventh and eighth, the parents did have to sign something, I believe, yeah, to, so that they already knew that, okay, yeah, well, this is where my child is, and this is what the course is about. And then it was our, you know, job to encourage the students to do their part. And then, yeah, we did have parents that, since they knew about it, that would kind of push their kids into it, and some kids just, no, I, I, this is too hard, I don't want to do it, and other kids were just gung ho with some encouragement, so. A little surprised, but hopefully we can keep getting it in early like that, as long as they're introduced to it in the middle school, I think it'll carry on to the high school.
Thank you. Director out.
Thank you, Chair Hume, and thank you all for this report. This has really been, been interesting, and I appreciated some of the details that you both shared about classes. I think one takeaway that, what I appreciated hearing is, you know, we're talking about collaboration, right? And of course, we want that for our students. Avid is also, you know, looking back over past, past conversations about our teachers, Avid is also bringing teachers together. We have real strength in our teaching staff, and you guys are able to share your knowledge and not feel like you, you know, like in a safe space, right? Where you're not, you know, look at how wonderful I am, this is, you know, but look what I'm doing, and look what my kids are doing, and, and, and that's really how we build strength within our teaching staff and to benefit our students. So that was, that was just really awesome to hear. And just a, a comment, I can't remember who made the comment, but it was, I, I think you did, Doctor, that about, you know, the graduation rate stayed pretty, pretty much level throughout the pandemic. And graduation rates were, for those classes were not impacted. My concern, of course, is, you know, our eighth and ninth graders, and, you know, possibly even the littles before them, right, that are, that are younger. You know, what are, what are we seeing in our ninth graders? What kind of weaknesses are we seeing? What kind of additional supports? Because that grade is not going to be the same as this year's seniors in, in any stretch of the imagination.
And I, I appreciate that, because that is kind of one of the things I wanted to draw your attention to, is this, this group that, that were seniors during the pandemic, we, we, we were able to support them, and they were able to graduate without significant loss. But it also speaks to kind of the priorities of this board and the administration of wanting to put, you know, proactively put those supports into place. So right now, the board has supported, through the use of the ESAR funds, having credit recovery during the school day, so that we are able to offer that service to students, which was not available prior to the pandemic, as well as summer credit recovery, as well as, I just want to give a big shout out to Community Ed and their summer programming, and the way that they continue to offer opportunities for rising ninth graders to earn credits prior to going into ninth grade, really trying to anticipate as much as possible the ways that we can continue to support those, those students that might have experienced some of that, that disconnection? Disconnection? Disconnect during, during the, during the pandemic, and, and I think that having some of those structures in place and those collaborations in place, and as well as a really strong collaboration with BAS, and how they continue to support students and create that environment for students to phase into BAS, meet those credit recovery requirements, and then phase back to BHS. And I think those partnerships and collaborations are there because we're willing, we as a district and you as a board, were willing to support those uses of our ESAR funds. We didn't buy frivolous things, we really invested in that recovery for our students, and I'm hoping that we will see those results as we look at graduation rates for our class of 22 and for our class of 23.
And I, I agree, this was kind of like, as, as you were speaking, Amina, you got me thinking about how this really is kind of a great theme for tonight's meeting, because this report is, you know, a predecessor to the budget conversation, the budget report, and, you know, how pleased I was when I was reviewing the slides for this, and then going through the, the budget information to see, you know, how, how things are connecting, and, and how those investments really are going to, we're, we're targeting them to make the most of, of, of our resources for our students, so, thanks again.
And if you or we can come up with anything to outreach to students of color to, to join Avid, because back in 2019 and 20, when I was Avid tutor, it was quite diverse, so I guess something happened after COVID, where the ball just dropped with those students, and we need to recapture them, and I don't, I don't mind even going out and trying to do speeches, or whatever it takes. Just let me know, because it's important.
Well, our Avid elective courses are very diverse, and they do reflect that. I think our other rigorous courses are not as diverse.
I see.
Our students may not feel as though they're as accessible. And so that's part of the value of the Avid, is that those are groups of students, especially BIPOC students, who then are, we're infusing with those skills, that they, they go on to take those rigorous courses.
Okay.
We just want greater outreach.
Right, right.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Director Chester?
Speaking of graduate, so when will we be informed of the class of 22?
I was hoping it was, part of the reason that we scheduled this one at this time is hoping that we have those results from MDE. Dr. Lowe, you have an anticipated date for?
No, I reached out MD directly with the question, and they just said April.
Yes.
So it could be in a week, could be in a month.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, I have just two quick comments, and then we'll let you go. This has been great, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it, I appreciate kind of starting with the big picture, and kind of the data, and then kind of drilling down into what it looks like on the ground with the students and the teachers. That's been really, really good format for this particular discussion. You mentioned early, or, early in the presentation that we are heading in the right direction in terms of the percentage of students, of BIPOC students in our rigorous courses. I know that's been a challenge for us for a number of years, and I think the comparison that you had was, I think, the current, the high school as a whole, and then our incoming ninth graders showing some of that progress, which is great, but overall, do we have a kind of a ballpark of how that has changed over the last few, say, two, three, four years?
Yeah, so we're seeing an increase in the number of students who are taking rigorous courses this year, we're seeing that bounce back. But one of the pieces that we are recognizing is that four years ago, the disparity between the percentage of students, white students in the classes versus the percentage of BIPOC students in the classes was much larger. And we begin to see that decrease, and so the next presentation, which is about disparities and the focus on that particular goal, we'll be able to share that trend data and be able to really drill in, and you can see the changes and the progress over time.
Wonderful, because we've been talking about that for a long time, so I will look forward to that in a future report. And then the other one, which I was, I had a different, different question, and I kind of rethought it after hearing Director Chester's comment about the, the, which slide was it? Slide 10 or 11? The developmental courses after graduation, and I was wondering, because I noticed, and it's great that we are closing the gap, I think, with the state average over the last four years. And then I was noticing the dramatic drop, like statewide and in our district since 2018, and I was trying to figure out why that could be, and then obviously, probably the pandemic, and the gap year comment is what really got me wondering about it, and is that, like, is the reason the number is significantly lower is because there's a lot of students who may be on the borderline, might be taking that gap year at this point, and, and taking a little longer before they start college? So I know we don't know the answer, but it was just an observation I made. So, thank you very much. If there are no further questions, we will let you go for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this feels like the perfect time for us to take a 15-minute.
Point of order, yes? I'd just like to acknowledge, you know, this used to be a committee that was structured like a traditional committee, where three of us would meet in a room on a separate night, and I would just like to acknowledge the value of the decision we made a couple of years ago to bring this as a committee.
It was one of the first decisions we made after Director Chester and I joined the board, and, so I haven't known it pre-that, but I, that was one of the rationales for making that change, from what I remember at the time, so I agree. Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
All right. We'll be back at 7:40, we'll just say 7:45. The clock says 7.
All around the state. And that's a really a celebratory point right there to have so many students come in to to what we found to be a great school. And you can see the enrollment numbers, our ADM from that first year was 454 students. And so, and that's kind of the, the, the process of COVID happening and then, and then kind of moving back to the schools. And what we've found this year is that really the, the movement of students coming into the online academy and then leaving the online academy is not really connected to COVID anymore. And that we have students who are staying and have found that this is a, a value to them. So this year, we're at 307 students enroll. And I think even from that number, we've increased a couple. This was back in February when I found this number. So, and that's been an increased number throughout the course of this year. So we've actually gained more students in our online academy. And just something, a current reality as we're seeing now is that we have some new open enrolled students already for next year from schools that, online academies that are no longer doing the elementary and middle school model, but only sticking to the high school. So we're, we're attracting more families and more students currently for next year. So just a demographic breakdown, as you can see here, elementary and secondary level is a very, it matches our community and, and also our, our schools that we have, our brick and mortar schools. One thing to note about secondary, and we'll get into this in just a moment, is that our, our secondary students at the high school have the option to, to be like co-enrolled. So at, at BHS as well as Virtual Academy for a class or two. And so that might come up in some data here, but that's important to note of that. Now it's, it's around 25%. So it's not a huge number that you see here represented, but the secondary number, just so you know, is middle school and high school combined together. So, and this is what I was referencing, there was a wondering about where we at, you know, students academic, where are they at as far as like receiving credits? And we heard a little bit about that in our last presentation, but this is just for this semester. So the, the first semester of this year, you can see where we're at as far as students earning, earning credits or students who have earned less, zero to two credits. And you can see that list right there. And that's also broken down demographically as well. And what this, what, what is interesting for me is to find out, well, what are the, ask those further questions, what are those stories that we can find out about this? And how does that match our current reality in the high school? And then how does, as we grow this program, how does year three look? And how does year four look as far as this? Again, this is a very small snapshot of what took place first semester and lots changed over a second semester. When we look at our Virtual Academy, financially, we can see that in that first year, our revenue was 5.1 million and our expenditure is, was 2.6 million. So the net gain during that time was $2.5 million from the students in Virtual Academy. And then the budgeted, as you can see here, the net gain would be $1.1 million for this year. Of course, when we audit, then we'll find out, you know, what, what the actual, the actual totals are, but that's how it was budgeted here. So also the current reality is what are our kids receiving? What, what is it like for them in Virtual Academy? And, and there's, it's a really cool model when we've got the, the amount of synchronous learning happening at our elementary and middle school level. That's something that is, that's not offered everywhere. And so our kids are interacting with their teachers. And I know that you've heard previous reports about that, so I don't need to totally share that, but it is really exciting. Also just to highlight that our students have extension activities where they, they are connected with a community. There are times where students get together. Even earlier this week, our, our fifth grade students got to enjoy our high school band program along with all of the other elementary fifth grade students. So that's just how we're connecting Virtual Academy with ISD 191 and making sure that everyone is working together. And again, it's in line with our pathways model. And I don't know, it's a, it's a really great opportunity for our students and families. Some things as we're looking at the Virtual Academy is, you know, what are some things that we need to be mindful of as we move into the future? How do we address certain things? And so there are some staff that have split responsibilities. They might be at the high school and Virtual Academy. And so how, how does that play out and how might we be more efficient with our sys, with our system? How do we continue to engage our families and our students with the learning that's happening? Then how do we stabilize enrollment? I've, we've seen over two years of fairly stable enrollment, but what does year three look like? And how do we ensure that there is a stability around enrollment? And then how do we really connect academically with, and elementary is one highlighted here of just seeing what is growth? What is growth for students over the, across the, the year, excuse me? And as an elementary principal, we look at growth all the time. We progress monitor. And how do we ensure that our students at Virtual Academy are receiving the same amount of growth from that starting point to the endpoint? And, and it, it's an area for us to, to look at. Again, we're still in year two, and so having trend data is really, it's, it's just non-existent to really know the effectiveness of those programs. So it's a, a place for us to be aware and, and look into. And so then, right, increase efficiency and effectiveness for our multi-tiered systems of support as we as a district are really emphasizing the MTSS model, ensuring that all components of it are not only in our brick and mortar buildings, but in our online academy here. How do we ensure that there's collaboration across teachers? Maybe high school teachers that are doing online, the Virtual Academy, but, but how are they working together? Or, or how do we ensure that we've got collaborative teams with our elementary teachers, which they do already? But how do we all work together as a system? Increasing parent partnerships. And I think that that's an area of, that is happening. And we're seeing parents involved and connected because that's a critical piece of student success in the Virtual Academy. How do we continue to make that grow? And then again, as I mentioned, the progress monitoring, looking at that over the course of multiple years to see this is a really effective practice. Our students are growing and how do we ensure that that's happening? And we continuously review that data and make adjustments to learning and, and programming to, to make sure that our students are growing at the rate that everyone else is growing. That's what I'd love to share with you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions and comments? Director Chester?
So kind of an inquiry question about what we know of some of our neighboring districts who've had virtual academies and just from conversations I had on Monday, hearing that some of those districts are, because of challenges or maybe lower enrollments, are discontinuing their virtual academies. And if we're projecting maybe with some of those closures, would that be impacting future enrollment in our Virtual Academy? I do have to say that I'm very pleased that even though we've seen a drop in, in enrollment, it's not as significant of a drop as I was fearing it might be. To see that we're at over 300 students is great, but then also hearing that other districts are shifting away from Virtual Academy, does that potentially open a door?
Yeah, I mean, every, thank you for that question. A lot of the research we did and correct me if I'm wrong, Principal Robbins, schools were modifying their virtual, our districts are modifying their Virtual Academy mostly around their ninth through 12th grade students. 191, Virtual Academy really does have a vision with that pathways and to understand that for some students and families, it, it really works. And so if we can provide that continuity of services, given our resources available, then I want to continue to pursue that.
One of the things that Rachel Gordon shared two years ago was how there was, there was a sense of excitement from MDE regarding our application and the work that we're doing around pathways. And so I think that there really has caused us to stand out, stand out among the, the other virtual academies that exist out there. And yeah, as Dr. Belmont was saying, there's modification to, to other neighboring districts, the elimination of the elementary and middle school. And, and we have a robust K-12 option.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Connor?
And I just wanted to add, I think also because of our marketing, don't you think getting students from other districts, that seems to, I bet that helps too. I'm really proud of that.
It's, it's some beautiful pieces of marketing that, that have been out there. It's very impressive.
Yay us.
Thank you for that. Other questions or comments? Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Hume. Yes, thank you both. Always appreciate knowing, well, not always, but I appreciate receiving this report because it is one of our newer schools and of course, fully appreciating that, you know, our team, you know, is looking at the Virtual Academy, making sure that, you know, I hear loud and clear, there are some real strong spots. There are also some growth areas and I hear that we're working on those. My question, and I don't think I'll get to see the answer to it, so I'm just going to ask you guys now, at least until budget comes out. So we had a, a net surplus year over year. How are we reinvesting that in the academy? I mean, because I know looking, you know, later tonight, we'll see the SIR funds, right? And there's some, some positions that are being added to, proposed to be added to the Virtual Academy. What are we doing with that, you know, the net 1.1?
Yeah, great question. And this kind of does articulate some need and I, it's my hope that you'll, an expectation you'll, you'll see that fleshed out in the next agenda item in the budget.
And actually I think it is in there now that I'm thinking about it. Yeah. Awesome. That was it? Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any others? Director Mueller?
Well, thank you. This continues to be something that I, I think is an exciting point for our district. It is admittedly still in its very early life cycle and we're growing. One thing I, I think I would, in the future, like to see is a little bit of the division of, of where our students reside in their, in their life cycle. So we have, you have 307 students enrolled. It'd be interesting to know the division between elementary, at least elementary and secondary, if not, you know, a little bit of grade breakdown or something, some segmentation of that. I sort of can do that by looking at the, the first pie chart slide, which is intended to be a demographic breakdown, but there is a total down there, but that sums to 360 total, because there's 90 in elementary and 270 in secondary. So that would not correspond with the 307 at the top. So I'm just, anyway, it does appear that the, at least the majority of our students are in secondary. And I'm wondering if that, you know, over time, I'll be interested to know if that's a trend or if that, that, that ratio stays roughly the same or, you know, if we're expansion in the elementary side of things. It seems like it'd be dynam, dramatically different Virtual Academy worlds to be dealing with, you know, elementary versus secondary, right? With all the peripheral involvement elements. So to, to that point, I, I would be interested just anecdotally, kind of, since we are early in the program, talk a little bit about the challenges that we're finding and then, you know, kind of what are some opportunities? You know, maybe new programming, maybe, you know, whatever, you talk, tell me, I'd be interested in those two points before I go on to my next thing. So what are some of the challenges? It's a, it's a unique operating role, right?
Yeah, for sure. And I think that we, we first want to look at the, the students in general, right? Like where, where are they at academically? Where are they at socially? And especially when, from an elementary lens, I, I go there first, right? How do we ensure that our students are getting that connection, that they're understanding school, that they are, that they're just, yeah, they're, they're getting a feel of it. They're such young learners. And so what's really great about what, what I've learned is how our Virtual Academy teachers are building community on a screen. And it's, it's really exciting. I remember when I was watching, watching it during, during COVID and it was just, our, our teachers are so gifted to be able to do that and connect with kids. And so that's, that's a great starting point. But then I think when we move into those challenges is how do we, because in a, in a general classroom, in a brick and mortar classroom, teachers can go and they can look and they can look over the shoulders and they can give that gentle guidance of, okay, I need you to do this or, or that. And so we can kind of see that, that, that push a little bit towards that, that academic behavior. And so I think that that's a challenge. It's a continuing challenge of how do the teachers build that connection with the students and encourage them to do, do amazing work that they can do. And I think that that's just, that's part of the process, that's part of teachers doing their magic with students and over the course of time. And so as students are participating more and more in the, in the Virtual Academy, they'll get used to, oh, this is how things are done and this is how the process is. I know I still have some kindergartners who are figuring out how to do school, right? And it's, and it's almost April. So that, that's kind of part of it and such a new, new way of learning. So I think that's probably like the biggest challenge and it's not just elementary level, but it, but it's across the board. And we have some students who may have tried the in-person learning and moving into the Virtual Academy, so there's an adjustment there. And all the different things that come with that adjustment. That's probably like a really general challenge, but there are different intricate parts as part of that.
Speaking of community, have we found, because I know we have students from all over the state and probably clustering more around us, but have we found any sort of almost spontaneous, outside of the virtual world, the interaction? I mean, you know, does a class of kids, elementary kids maybe get together for a playdate on a weekend at a park or something like that? Is that, any of that occurred to our knowledge or?
There have, there have been like intentional get togethers and, and I'm not sure if they're the, the spontaneous ones where just kids are like connecting with each other or whatever during messaging and saying, hey, let's go to the park. But I know the teachers are intentional about building community and finding opportunities for kids to be together in person.
Good. The last thing I want to ask about is the financial snapshot slide. This is an interesting take. We don't usually see something of this nature in our, in these, but we, we afforded the, I guess, the value of having a very sort of school within a school environment so you can do something like this. I am curious though that, you know, we had a 5.1 million revenue, 2.6 in the first data point of 2021, 22, and then 3.8 and 2.7. So essentially costs stayed the same while revenue is down. Revenue, I understand being down because it's a per child, per pupil, and we see the numbers up above. I'm just curious, is, is the reason that expenditures are essentially the same is that, you know, there's a, there is a sort of a fixed cost element to this? You have probably roughly about the same amount of teachers maybe or, you know, same infrastructure going into it? And then sort of after that, the, the revenue would rise if, if you were to bring in additional students, but the costs would not necessarily transpond the same? Is that the reason or why, why are our costs exactly, almost exactly the same with far less students involved?
I'm not sure if I can totally speak to that. My, I'm going to make a, an assumption.
I'm seeing a hand being raised in the back room saying he can speak to it.
Commentary to that.
I'll speak to that with my portion of my.
Perfect. That'll be great.
Put a pin in that.
Thank you, Stacy. That concludes my, my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Okay.
You and then you.
Knowing that we're, do we know in comparison to the first year, seeing that we currently have like 67 students in Virtual Academy who have opened or enrolled in, do we, have we found that to be a greater number than year one?
I didn't just pick that question.
I would curious, does curious, because then does the, does the, does that cost per pupil, like that, that 6,800 or whatever we get, that comes with the, that student into Virtual Academy?
The, the costs have remained fixed because, one, the first year that we had VA was last year.
Yeah.
So we still staffed accordingly, not knowing whether numbers were going to stay the same, whether they would increase or drop dramatically. They did decrease. So your revenue changed, our expenses remained the same. Going forward, now as we start building up some track record, if you will, we'll be able to forecast a little bit better and adjust our staffing. Now, the number of open enrolled did drop, but so did our enrollment. So for percentage wise, they both went down pretty much the same.
Okay. Because I just was fascinated that like 22% of our enrolled VA students are out of district, which is, you know, which is a lot in comparison to in person.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, significantly so.
Right.
Yes.
You know, so.
We are.
Was interested then, does the, does the student cost per pupil or whatever for that student, does that entirely then come to the district because of they're enrolled in our Virtual Academy?
Because of the open enrollment?
Because of the, okay.
We're receiving the revenue for that.
Okay.
And, and part of the thing to understand that it's different between a small school that has Virtual Academy versus a small brick and mortar school. Because your overhead decreases by nearly 20%.
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
We don't have transportation costs, we don't have utilities, we don't have additional custodial, food service, admin, all sorts of different things that go into it. So when you're doing, running a Virtual Academy type of program, when, you know, when we do our budget stuff, it's 78 to 80% of our budget is salary and benefits. So your revenue stream is maximized. And I'm stealing your thunder, but now I'm getting into mine. So, and, but it does, every building generates different amounts of revenue and it all comes back to the larger pot. It's not costing us to run this program. It's actually for us contributing to the, the benefit of everyone.
Right. Right.
All yours.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious with the, the size of the open enrollment piece and then that financial impact for the district.
Director Alt?
Just a brief request. Given the uniqueness of, of this school, I'd like to request that this become a regular report for, you know, at least the next couple of years so that we can continue to understand how Virtual Academy is doing and the, the, the funding mechanisms and all of that.
How would you define regularly?
Annual, annual. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Just annual.
Quarterly is probably a bit much.
No.
Great. Any others?
Could I say?
Of course.
So I'm glad that this is available for our community and our families and thank you for bringing this information. We do have to be cautious about the elementary, having, them having a slow growth, because I know during the pandemic, I have two elementary students, you know, doing distant learning and it's not easy. They, they don't have the discipline yet, so we have to be careful and have different strategies for that. I just have this question and you may, I don't know if our district really tracks homeschooling numbers and I don't know if there's a relationship where families who homeschool now are opting for this VA option. Have you?
That's interesting.
That's a great question. I, I do not have that information.
Okay.
That's an interesting question.
We can look at that question. Give us some good questions.
All right. My one question at this point, I guess, is if we have any, we've talked about this in the past, but I'm curious as we're kind of getting closer to the end of their, of kind of the second full year in its current form, is do we have any data that supports the rationale that families and students would select a Virtual Academy over in-person school? I have a lot of theories and ideas, but I'm.
We don't have specific data regarding that. I know that our administrators and our teachers are connecting with families and as we refer in each child has a different story, right? And each family is, is selecting this, this option for, for a variety of reasons.
There are probably 307 different reasons.
There just might be, right?
Well, I do believe Principal Ron and Principal Paul are looking to conduct some of that field research this, this spring.
It would just be interesting to know.
To learn.
Even for our, for our marketing, as Director Connor was saying, it might help us marketing, promoting the program in the future if we have a better understanding of why people are selecting VA, we could aim marketing in those directions.
The parent testimonial.
Sure. Exactly.
One thing I would just add to some of the anecdotal things I've heard just from individual stories, also includes the, our, our commitment to cultural proficiency and that the family unit is different than, than that of sometimes the more dominant traditional culture. And so Grandma and Grandpa might not be 40 miles away like they are for, for my children. And so sometimes family dynamics shift and having flexibility and opportunity to continue forward with education is well received for some of our students and families.
Right. Definitely. Thank you. I do have one other question I forgot, I need to scroll down a little more. I was curious about, you mentioned, and I saw it on social media this week also, the kind of the in-person event opportunities, like when they went to the high school to hear the band. I'm curious about the logistics behind that. If they're all doing VA from home, are we expecting the parents would drive them to the high school for that sort of an event? Or how does that, what does that look like?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my assumption. Thanks. All right. I think that is it. So next, we will receive an update about the proposed FY '24 budget from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Hume, members of the board. To answer your question, as far as the comparison between homeschooling and our online programming, every year after we have our October 1 student count, that takes the, the person, or that takes the count of students that we actually have at that moment in time. But in November following that, it also allows us the opportunity to do a look back, to see which students are homeschooled, which students are attending other districts, private schools and such. So we'll have more information to be able to build on next November. So every November, we'll be able to provide more and more information and we'll look for those trend lines.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Chair Hume, members of the board, on behalf of Dr. Battle, Director Silvine and I, well, again this year, District 191 is taking a values and priorities based approach to creating a proposed budget. Priorities in developing the fiscal year '24 budget include, continue to fund our work to become a pre-K through 12th grade pathways district. We want to align our budget with our strategic directions, including our commitment to developing and sustaining a diverse and equitable education system. We want to continue to address the effects of the pandemic while also looking forward to providing for financial stability after federal pandemic funds expire. Some notes for you about the proposed budget. When we get to presenting Dr. Battle's proposed budget, you'll see that they reflect a cautious, that it reflects a cautious approach to our improved financial situation. Based on our assumptions, we think we can address some needs and goals without jeopardizing sustainability of our programs. That's an exciting position for us to be in. The proposed additions reflect, reflect prioritizing pathways and our strategic directions as well as being responsive to the input we received both through the survey and in working with principals and budget managers. We'll be entering the second year of a two-year plan to use federal pandemic relief funds. As intended, these funds have provided stability and additional support for students and families. That thoughtful, intentional planning is a big part of why we're in position to propose this budget. Despite the additions included in this proposed budget, we still expect to grow our fund balance by about $7 million next year, which will help buffer us from the loss of federal aid and other financial uncertainty. With that, we'll go through the presentation.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Belmont.
Thank you, Dr. Belmont. Just to give you kind of a review, or a feeling of the direction which we will be going, many of the slides that you see tonight will look familiar, because the last two presentations that we provided you have been kind of building on this. So, we will review our timeline, the process, the assumptions that we were making, the use of our federal funds, share some of the feedback that we received from stakeholders, also some research themes and considerations, and strategies for a structurally sustainable budget, and then we'll provide you the initial recommendations for FY '24. To just kind of update where we are at this point in time, in January and February, we had approved our FY '23 revised budget, which kind of reset our starting point as we began the planning for FY '24. Also, we provided you information based upon our assumptions. Then, the first meeting in March, Dr. Battle and I briefly walked through what is happening at the state, how some of those things may impact us, looked at some of the research that we're building off of, and now at this meeting here, we are moving forward with our recommendations. After we present our recommendations tonight in April, we will set up a number of meetings, both with staff and the community, to receive feedback, and then we'll bring that feedback back to you in early May. Then, the first meeting in June will be our workshop for the proposed budget, and then we will ask you to finalize that and approve that at the second meeting in June. Again, we do have to adopt a budget before July 1st. So, also, the areas graded out are those areas that have occurred up to this point. I left the other two kind of highlighted there in black, because the reality is, these things go on all the time. I, I mean, monthly, they'll be working with Tyler. That isn't the code that I thought should have been there, or, you know, and so they'll make corrections as they're, they're going. And also, the use of discretionary funds happens all the time, as building principals decide what they need for their site at that point in time with what they have. Again, just a recap of our assumptions. Looking, originally, we were looking at the school year of an enrollment of 7,219 students. As of 3/13, we were at 7,457, so you can see that we are actually up about 238 students. As of earlier this week, I think we were actually 7,400 and over 60, 61, 62. So, we've actually continued to stay stable, if not increase, from where we thought. Our assumptions for FY '24 is that we'll look at an enrollment of 7,663. Part of that is due to the senior class leaving and a smaller kindergarten class coming in.
Can I just, I think you said 7,663? It was 363, right?
363, yeah. I'm sorry, what did I say?
663.
Oh, yeah, we're a little bit lower than that.
That's, that's why I wanted to interrupt you. Thank you.
Projected this year to generate close to $6 million additional in our levy aid, state aid, we are seeing an increase for our compensatory. Now, I want to make sure that it's understood, we are seeing an increase in our compensatory with the universal meal plan. That may impact how much of an increase we see. So, it could go backwards a little bit, but we still will have an increase. We are still assuming a 3% increase on the general education fund. Numbers have been out there as high as 5%. Right now, we're, we're not assuming the worst of a 0%, but we are still trying to be cautious with that. Looking at also a $5 million increase to address cross subsidies, both in special education and English learner, we do hope that that number will increase versus some of the other mandates that are being proposed at the moment. Federal aid, the ESAR funds that we have received through the grant, we will continue to use those for this fiscal year, both to supplement and to supplant in some of the different areas. As you'll see in some of our numbers, we say that we're looking at a $7 million ad. Part of that is, we're also using close to, well, I'm going to round, about $4 million to supplant through the ESAR funds, so that's some of the difference that you see in the bottom-line numbers, but that's how that's built in. Combined revenue increase of approximately $17 million. Preliminary assumptions going forward as far as our expenses, we're looking at a 2.5% salary increase on contracts. These are, this is an increase on schedules, not the total packages. 6% increase on transportation costs, 18% increase on utilities. We're, we're hoping that that will back up a little bit, we're seeing some good things there. A 5% increase on supplies, that's inflationary materials and other pieces. We are still looking at close to a 9% increase in our medical insurance premiums, and also understanding that the ESAR funds will, for continuing for at least one more year. So, our expenditures with our initial assumptions was around $9 million. So, our, our original assumption, revenue of $17 million, expenditures of $9 million, with an increase to our fund balance of close to $8 million, are roughly about $40.5 million. Again, we are looking at this, because when the ESAR money goes away, instead of having a hard landing and having to take out $8 million from our budget, we are trying to make sure that we have built up enough so that we can take this down in a more managed approach, and not have to do hard cuts, but do targeted reductions in areas. Okay? We also reviewed our ESAR three allocations the last meeting, coming up to just about $8 million, as I mentioned. 3.4 is what we're using to supplant current cost. Mental health priorities, or input survey, now I'm jumping here a little fast. So, we opened up the survey February going into March. As of March 3, we had 24 responses, and priorities include mental health, behavior support, targeted services, rebuilding some of the music programs, efficiencies, reduce administration, look at a four-day school week. Since March 3, we've received another nine responses, about another third. Again, very similar in the areas, looking for more supports for the families, bridging those gaps between, and, and, and also reducing administration as such. Okay. Strategies for our structurally sustainable budget. Again, we're looking at our, our pathways programming, maintaining current class size parameters that the board sets, the use of our restricted funds going forward, understanding, as I just mentioned, the ebb and flow of revenue streams and planning for that in advance, and then also using our federal funds strategically going forward. Class sizes for K-5 district-wide averages 24.5 students, less in the kindergarten, more in fifth grade. Middle schools, we're looking at 21 students per FTE. This is a little bit different than class size, but when you start bringing in all of the resources within the building, that's how many students for each teacher. 912 average is around 26 per FTE. Okay? Looking at right sizing, now I'm jumping into the recommendations here at this point, our, our recommendations. Right sizing, again, we're talking about losing just over 90 students. We would be looking at reducing just over two FTEs. This is throughout the entire system in general ed, okay? Some sites are actually increasing their FTEs, others may be losing. It's, but it's little bits and pieces here and there, adding up to about a reduction of 2.157. We will be adding two FTEs for EL services. We will be looking at adding a Director of Equity. Our Director of Equity will help coordinate the services for our cultural liaisons, our EL programming, and a number of different other areas. We are wanting to make sure that we are focusing on equity within our system and all the services that are necessary with that. Pathways, we will continue our pathway program without an increase in, in funding or a decrease. Referring back to virtual academy, we are also looking at doubling down a little bit in our, our marketing strategy for this. We're adding $50,000 for virtual academy. We feel that we have a strong niche in this area compared to many other districts. We also feel that we have some real advantages, not only with our K-12 pathways program that we're able to provide, our synchronous instruction at the elementary and the middle school level, but we are very excited about some of the associative arts degrees in the liberal arts that we're able to provide at the high school. We believe that we can bridge that over to our virtual academy. We believe that will have a real draw statewide. Okay? So, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're going in. I'm going in. So, looking at the, I'm excited, maybe I should say it anyway. I'm really excited about our opportunities there and what we can offer, both our surrounding communities as well statewide. So, we will be looking at adding a counselor for our virtual academy. Also, the person has been working currently this year with the grant on our associative arts degree, so we feel that that's a real natural marriage for that going forward. Also, we will be looking at adding another Level 4 tech position within the tech department, with part of that role being on the security for, for our technology. We are excited this year to see the results of adding back our middle school sports, and we are coming forward, we want to add volleyball to the mix with that, and continue to grow that opportunity. Earlier, I was talking about the, the addition of our Director of Equity. Part of that, the work will be focusing on our EL services, so we will be eliminating our EL coordinator position, and that's about $150,000 in reduction. Looking to add four FTEs for elementary TOSIS. This is a support for the buildings, for their MTSS work, as well as adding a behavior analyst. One of the things that we have seen, and, and especially at one of our middle schools where we targeted a behavior analyst, and with the leadership that was there and the way that that was used, has seen a significant increase of capacity within the building to address behaviors in a proactive approach. And so, what we're trying to do is to replicate that at a young age within our elementary buildings as well, so that we can then start moving away from the discipline action and be able to focus more on the instructional needs. Virtual academy and a BOSS social worker. Again, this is one position combining the, for the services needed at both at BOSS as well as dedicating it for VA. One of the things that Brad had mentioned in his report was, we kind of have, the first year was a little bit fragmented as far as the supports and where everybody was kind of coming in. We're looking to consolidate that so that individuals, specific individuals, can support our VA programming, and they own the students in those programs. And then also, you have about $3.4 million, again, using ESAR for current positions. And with that, we're looking at about $1 million of additional expenditures with the proposals that we're bringing forward. Okay? So, $17 million, again, swinging back to our assumption, $17 million in revenue. Now, instead of $9 million of additional expenditures, we're looking at $10 million. And so, instead of a projected fund balance ending at 30, 40.5, we'll be looking at 39.5. Everything that we're doing at this point, we've been working with our principals, and not to get too businessy here, but we really are looking for return on investment. We're going to take the resources that we have at this point in time, double down on developing capacity throughout the system, understanding that as we continue to improve in different areas, some of those resources will be able to wind back down, because we have the supports and everything else in place going forward. So, it's an investment. It's an investment for the near future. That's what I have for you folks.
Hugh, indeed. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Dr. Belmont. Board members, comments, questions? Director Chester?
So, going to the right sizing, and seeing that, we know that it's not like singularly we're going to reduce to, like, it's not like two people FTEs, that, that is kind of fluctuates based off of grades, enrollments, and, and so like hearing that some buildings are seeing increases, some buildings are seeing decreases, understanding the impact it has on our staff and faculty, are you, like, how, like, the reduction is kind of like across the, the board of buildings? When will staff be notified if maybe they would be relocated to a different building? If some buildings are seeing an increase? Like, because I'm assuming there's going to be shiftings happening?
So, we're still on target with our, traditionally, we notify staff that are, our probationary staff that we're not renewing the week after we return from spring break, that we're looking at Tuesday and Wednesday for that when we return, okay? Many of our reductions this year will not be about the budget reductions, it's just probationary staff that we're seeing aren't really a good fit for us, for our district, okay? Within that, though, that should provide enough room for other folks to, to move around, so we won't be making cuts for budgets. People will still have positions for those.
Potentially at a different school.
Pardon me?
But potentially at a different school.
Possibly. Yep, and we have that every year.
Sure.
We, we, we may have sharing between different buildings, different programs. An elementary may reduce an FTE, another elementary may go up. We will continue also with, for the elementary, what we call as a floater list. So, that's where teachers, we, we, we pull them out, every building is staffed, we pull those out, waiting to see where our kindergarten enrollment actually may come in. So, before we assign somebody, and then we have to move them later in the summer, we kind of wait to see where they need to be assigned.
So, in previous years of having to do more cutting than we've had recently, we've had to notify faculty that they were not going to be renewed, but then, like, in the summer or as fall's approaching, we wanted to extend, to bring them back. Are we going to see a reduction in that occurrence?
More than likely, yes. Yes. Without putting too much of a fine point on it, really, the majority of our reductions will be based upon compatibility with the district.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I just, I just know that, I mean, just having personally experienced, you know, fluctuations and, you know, you kind of want to know, and, and it's like, you know, and kind of reducing some of that anxiety.
This is a new experience for us as board members.
It is.
We've not had that before. Thanks. Okay, thanks. Other questions? Director Alt?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the, the clear presentation. Just a handful of questions. On slide nine, on the ESAR funds, the ESAR allocations. Support to address impact of classes under 25 at BHS. Can you elaborate on what that means?
So, we had that this year, where we had the allocation, and we're looking at that again next year. As we're looking at credit recovery, as we're looking at trying to help students regain, we may have class sizes that are actually lower than the 25. We do still have our college and school classes, our AP classes, other courses that we're offering that run somewhere between 20 and 25. Really, a large part of this was also to support the transition, like ninth grade. If, if because of the building as a whole, you're looking at a, a general class size, are we able to apply maybe one or two FTEs at the lower class, at the lower grades to help with the transition so that kids are still making up with that time? It's just, it's just rebound FTEs at this point in time.
So, you're suggesting, then, that your approach is likely to be to use some of this to focus on ninth grade?
What I'm saying is, it, it gives the building more flexibility to say, oh, I may have a ninth-grade language arts class that is just too large.
Yeah.
We need to maybe reduce that. I'm not saying that it was earmarked just for ninth grade, but it does give the, the building discretion on how to use it to what their needs are.
And that's, that falls under admin's role, the principal's role. So, I So, I know that in addition to the classes that you had mentioned, we also have some slow, some lower pathways classes. Would those fall under that umbrella as well?
Yep.
Because, I mean, the next, the next question is, you know, I know embedded throughout this, of course, our schools are K-12 pathway schools, and yet I don't see anything explicitly outside of not reducing pathways that we're investing in, if that makes sense. There's, there's no, there's nothing earmarked specifically for how we're investing in our pathways, unless I'm missing it.
Nothing additional than what we already are.
Mm-hmm.
Right. That this is correct. So, we're not taking anything away.
And I guess that, I guess, so the statement that we're prioritizing our pathways, it doesn't equate to not reducing them, in my mind.
Um...
I mean, if we're prioritizing our pathways, that leads me to think that we would be investing in them, and I'm not seeing that.
Well, we are still investing in them. My point is, is that we're not adding to the investment.
Mm-hmm.
But at the same time, we're not taking away from that as well.
Gotcha.
So, I'm, so it's like where we have reductions based upon class sizes, right sizing. That isn't impacting our moving through the system for pathways types of programs.
Got it.
So, you could have a pullback in some areas.
Mm-hmm.
We're not, we're not doing that here.
And I guess, you know, kind of as a follow-up to a conversation we had in retreat about pathways, I just think back to that and that we do still, you know, Kathy Funston discussed with us, you know, some of the challenges that pathways are facing. You know, that might be something to consider next year rather than, rather than maintaining, what is it, where are the areas really that, that need investment if, if we happen to find ourselves in the fortunate position to be able to do so?
And, and again, one of the things that Dr. Battle mentioned the last meeting was we are not throwing everything into the mix at this point in time until we see what happens at the state level.
Yeah.
So, we're, you know, we're adding a million, and these are our initial priorities of, again, the return on investment, building the capacity going forward. We'll reevaluate our circumstances, our situation, and then, do we need to invest more in pathways? Are there certain areas in which we are? Again, sometime, careful. Pathways programs in some of the areas may not have the same amount of students as other areas. So, even though we're not actually saying we're adding, but because the revenue may be decreasing with the number of students participating in it.
Got it.
We're still subsidizing at the same level. So, in a sense, you, you have increased.
Yep.
See what I'm saying with that?
But that's at the secondary level. If we're doing pathways K-12, are we fully vested and funded to where we need to be to be having it demonstrated fully in the elementary setting? I think that's what you're getting at.
That's also part of it, too. Yeah.
It's a good question. I do think that, you know, there's maintenance, there's, there is fun, existing funding, like Director Silvine said, for maintaining and enhancing pathways that's been funded over the years. The other thing I would add is pathways engagement is predicated on success in the core. So, when there's investments into even like summer programming or credit recovery or opportunities for students to just build that momentum and that engagement, that kind of, that shakes out in a lot of the pathway experiences, so.
No, that makes sense. And I appreciate the reminder about waiting to see what happens in St. Paul because that's, that is a big, a big one.
The Behavior Analyst, understanding that the one, at the one middle school has had a really significant impact on the school. I'm wondering, I mean, obviously, the team landed on the choice of elementary being really the next place for a Behavior Analyst. I guess I'm just wondering why we wouldn't necessarily, is, was elementary possibly more needy than the other secondary school?
Well, we are looking at, if, some of the initial planning was, is to take the Behavior Analyst that we have at Nicollet and use part of that time also at Eagle Ridge. So, we would be moving and spreading those resources out. The piece that we're finding is every building will look for more resources if they can get them.
Yep.
Okay? But really, our high school and our middle schools have a lot of support resources available to them. Our elementary principals are, at this point in time, looking for a little bit more support across the system. And like I said, this is an investment to develop capacity, take off some of that load, and then we hope to be able to unwind that.
And thus, the TOSSAs at elementary, too, that kind of goes hand in hand with the Behavior Analyst. That makes sense. Thank you. And I guess, you know, and Stacy, you touched on this, you know, in terms of rolling back from the SRF funds, we know that we're going to have to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, be judicious, right, in how we do that without, you know, stunting the system, but at the same time, we can't be too slow.
No, we won't be able to be too slow. We won't be able to keep everything forever.
Right.
But my hope is, is that we can wean the system over two to three years afterwards. Okay? So, that's why we're, we are being cautious on the front end. We are not just kind of saying, well, money in, money out.
Right.
It's like, if we do that, we will hit the wall very hard and very quick, like many of the other districts around us. We are mapping this out. The other benefit that I have to say, as unexpected as it was this year, a stable to growing enrollment goes a long ways.
Yeah. Yeah.
We want to continue that.
And I appreciate also, and correct me if I'm not hearing you correctly, that along with that, some shifting of staffing to address needs as we roll things back, kind of as a slight, not a full restructure, but, you know, just kind of targeted where it needs to be, that's going to be part and parcel of the process.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
We're going to find that some things really worked well, and we really want to hang on to those. We're going to find that some things didn't work as well as we may have hoped, or we may find that some of the things that we put in place are a good substitute for something else that we've had for a long time. Some of, this will all be a part of the mix as we move forward.
Great. Thank you.
Did you have any others? All right. Other comments or questions?
I'm done.
Director Miller?
Thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward. I'd like to start on Slide Seven, Preliminary Expenditure Assumptions. Leftover from our previous conversation, my understanding is the transportation, 6% is a fixed, that's contractually obligated. 9% was, we're pretty solid on that for the medical increase. I'm glad to hear you are softening on the 18%. I still feel that's a pretty high expected, expected number. CPI, I think, on energy is around 11 or 12%, something like that, so. But that's good.
Yep.
Down to the input survey summary, Slide 10. So, you said 24 in, and then you said, I think, nine more?
Nine more since then. Yep.
Okay. So, 33 responses. Do we have any indication of who is responding to these?
I will have to get back to you on that. I don't know if...
More specifically, is it community members, engaged community members, staff members?
I don't know specifically what questions are asked or if we are tracking emails to where we would be able to know. That's a question I'll have to get from Aaron. That's something that he set up through communications.
Okay.
If it's not asked, I could see it being useful in the future to ask, are you a student, a parent, a community member, staff, something like that.
Well, specifically, when you look at the answers that are given here.
Yeah. And we get both. I mean, and we do have many that are both, you know, so.
Sure.
Then, let's see, oh, under the, the right sizing or the, the actual line item pages, I guess specifically on 15, just a nuanced question, I'm just curious about middle school volleyball. How did we land on a number of 33,000? That seems, I mean, I know stipends are a few thousand or whatever. I, it's curious. It's a small number and a huge budget, but...
Part of it is the startup with the different coaches, the equipment, the transportation costs.
I was wondering if transportation is in this. Okay, that would...
Uniforms.
Majority of it.
I mean, you're, it's a startup. It will not be that amount going annually going forward, but that is our startup cost.
Okay. And back up again, I would like to talk a little bit about the SRF Three allocations, Slide Nine. So, help me again understand this first line item, amount to supplement current costs, 3.4 million. So, if I'm understanding correctly, everything below there is specifically called out to its purpose or what it is, but we're, have a lump of 3.4 in SRF monies that we're using that we're, I mean, basically, we're saying if SRF was suddenly pulled out from under us tomorrow, we'd have to go find 3.4 in our general fund?
That's correct.
Oof. All right. Just want to be very clear about that. All right. Then, the timing on these, so, I mean, there are things in here that decisions need to be made, and I'm going to get specifically to one, but I understand our budgetary process. So, you know, if for some reason we made a decision to pull any one of these, we would be essentially looking at disrupting some, these individual items would go away, obviously. And I want to talk a little bit about the Edge Free For All Schools. We've, we dedicated 400,000 for that. My understanding is that would apply to programming that is currently being assigned or taking reservations as we speak for this summer.
We, okay, so, the Edge program rolls out in, in three different phases. The first phase that we're doing at the moment is making sure that our summer school programming and registrations is occurring for, like, our middle schoolers specifically. Then, the next part of the phase will be, we'll open up registration for the 191 community, and then we open it up for all of our communities that, just because Community Ed has opened up to anybody that wants to participate in this type of program. That's the structure that we've always had.
Mm-hmm.
The last summer, we used some of the SRF grant money that we received to offset the cost to make it open to, to, to folks. This year, we're going to have that similar pattern. But the Community Ed has kind of targeted this approach to make sure that those who are needing additional instructional support are moving towards the summer school registrations first. Then, they, they hold back in August after summer school is done, a large portion of the registrations so that the students who did summer school can then do the enrichment stuff. If we started off with the enrichment stuff too soon, let's see, do I want candy or do I want spinach? Our kids, instead of signing up for the academic component, families would be pushed or would be more engaged to sign up for the Edge experience. So, that's why we kind of roll this out slowly, if you will. Then, we do serve the 191 community first, but again, Edge used to be, well, will return once the money has gone to a fee-based program, and our fee-based program has always been open to anybody in the surrounding area as well.
Right. But my understanding is the Edge is currently open for registration right now, and for two weeks, it'll be limited to 191 students. So, I'm assuming we're in that two-week window right now. You, I mean...
I need to verify that because my understanding was from talking with Jason that that was actually going to be later.
That would be great. I, that would be what I'm advocating for tonight because I'll get to the point. That was what I was informed, I've been recently communicating with Jason about this. Because my concern is that, I mean, it's normally $40 a day, I think, for this activity? Yeah. And many families might utilize this as, whatever you call for tweens, not daycare, but activities, right? Opposed to maybe signing up for a third party outside something, they're making a financial decision, they have to get booked in, these other things, if they're not going, or maybe it's horse camp or whatever, they're going to take care of the kid for the day, they have to get signed up for this stuff. And if they're looking at a possibility of it being free, that's a pretty big decision pivot point for them, and we're not promoting or talking about that, to my knowledge, anywhere other than if you happen to go into Board Book and snoop down in the, in this slide, you would know that Edge is being potentially looked at as being free.
Yeah. And, and, again, there is a part of that that is, like I said, is measured and planned out because if, if it is known, and, and again, we won't be turning away community members that want to do this, but when we look at a lot of our summer enrichment programs, one population pretty much dominates.
No, I appreciate that.
And so, that's one of the things that we're, again, we're trying to make sure that, one, we're taking care of the instructional need of our students first, make sure that we're reserving a bank for families then to do the enrichment component, do the 191 folks then next.
So, you're suggesting that, because you have a line item on summer school program for 620,000, if for some reason you got an unexpected abundance of response to summer school programming, you might shift some of the Edge 400,000 to, to cover the summer school program, is that as a priority over?
Both of these numbers represent...
Spinach is a priority over ice cream.
Well, both of these numbers represent what it cost us last summer roughly to run.
Okay.
So, we're anticipating a similar turnout. And again, the total number is fairly boxed in, the 400,000, but it's boxed in, again, for a number of different reasons. Just, part of it's just the logistics of setting it up, the staff to supervise this as, as well as the transportation, securing the tickets to the different events. We won't be able to do some events if we have too many students because they limit how many kids can come in at a time.
Yeah. So, part, part of the challenge I have, though, is this idea that we would potentially end up funding, using 191 SRF funds that, you know, we just spoke about that if we were to lose, we'd have three, I mean, we're going to have to eventually use some of this stuff to find, to make real hard decisions in coming years, or using some of it to fund students from other districts to come to programming here. I have no problem with letting them enjoy the benefits of the Edge, but I don't understand why they couldn't either use their own district's SRF funds or pay for it. Now, I've been told, I understand it's federal funding and you can't discriminate. I, I have a, a, I don't believe that's been stress tested. I have a hard time buying into that personally, but I'll leave it at that. I just, I believe the intention was that you can't discriminate within your own district. I don't know that it, unless someone has specifically asked that question to somebody of whether that's considered discrimination because they're getting their own SRF funds. But that's not, unless that's been asked specifically and you can speak to it, I suggest we don't debate that too much tonight, but going there, but what I'm going to say is we do, we do limit the window at the beginning.
Yep.
To 191-only students, to see as many as we can get in.
Yep.
I would like to see us saying to the community, hey, by the way, we're using some funds and we're able to make this free, and make sure that window's open long enough that everybody wants a chance as a 191 student, get the opportunity to sign up. And then, if there's room afterwards and we're obligated to use the additional monies to cover, you know, other district students coming in, that's fine, but that would be my preference, I guess, is...
Appreciate that. One thing I will make clear, you have two different FIN numbers for your SRF funds, 160 and 161. 160 is what applies to the school day kind of things. So, when we're looking at our normal calendar, our instructional supports, that's coming out of FIN 160. That's where we're using $3.4 million to supplant our current cost. FIN 161 is your out-of-school or additional time. They don't mix. So, everything that's being used here would be our after-school or our summer school type of programming. So, when we're looking at that 3.4... So when we're looking at that three point four, that's coming out of our general fund. The one sixty-one is all of the enrichment, all of the additional instruction, either after-school or during the school year. And quite frankly, we receive so much money in that area, we're struggling to find ways to make sure we spend it all and to do it well.
Okay.
To Director Miller's point, registration is open for the Edge and for Project Kids.
It is, so I can assure you it is.
Because I just went on the site, because I just registered my daughter for Project Kids for the summer, so I figured the Edge must be up likewise. And it does say that we're only accepting students who enrolled in one ninety-one, and if your child is not, to come back April third.
Okay.
Later.
Okay.
But still, before summer starts.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, and we're not mentioning anything about a potential reduction in fees or anything, so, so anyway, okay, that is what I had to ask about.
Okay. And April third, I believe, is the Monday everyone returns from spring break, so, families, if you want to go to the Edge this summer, register now. Other questions before, all right, I just had one that might be more of a comment couched in a question, or the other way around, but, so, Director Alt mentioned the elementary behavior analyst position, and one thing I was wondering, as you were talking about it, is that's part of the thought behind that is that investment in our elementary schools, that it could potentially kind of nip in the bud future behavioral challenges once they get to secondary school, middle school and high school.
Both, you're looking at the future, but, deans are responsive, behavior analysts are proactive, behavior analysts are developing capacity in other teachers as well, so they can come into a classroom, observe the behavior, help give the teacher some strategies as to how they may address those behaviors going forward, given some time. The teacher then, going forward, doesn't need to call on a dean or a principal to be able to address the behavior, you know, because the capacity is there, thus you are reducing potentially the need of all of the reactive types of services.
And potentially starting that at a younger age pays off five years from now when they're in middle school.
Of the entire system, yes.
I would just add to that, too, that especially for our youngest learners, they're sometimes in, they go through phases, and so they're sometimes in need of a burst of service, where someone can come in and coordinate and teach, like Director Swine said, how to manage those bursts of service to get the momentum built up for the student, and then we can see, we can then see behavior trends corrected for long periods of time, because they're in a highly developmental phase in their lives.
Great. Yeah, I think that's all I have for now. So, unless there are, if there are no further questions?
Can I just add?
Yes.
Because my special head head comes into play, that you can be addressing a behavior, but if you're not addressing the root cause of the behavior, the behavior's going to continue. So I'm assuming that the behavioral analysts will be able to identify the root cause of the behavior, so that the root cause is addressed, so then the child and the student is not being, not reprimanded, but, but whatever regarding the behavior.
Correct. They have highly specified degrees for exactly that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that. All right, next, we will receive a report about the calendar design and recommendations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Brad Robb, Elementary Principal, and Wendy Drugi, BEA President. Welcome to all of you.
Yes, thank you, yes. We are excited to present our recommendations for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year calendar. We've had so much fun here tonight, it might feel like it's the two thousand twenty-four.
He's going to make a comment, yeah. He's been up there on the hot seat a long time.
No, the intent is to share findings from our committee work as it aligns to our board parameters and policies. The findings are represented in a model being presented by Wendy Drugi and Brad Robb tonight, and on behalf of a really robust, awesome committee that's been meeting, and our intent, whenever the board does decide to adopt our calendar recommendations, is to then bring our committee back to analyze those results and then start to build our twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. That's the context.
Good evening. This next slide talks about our, just the board policy parameters around the calendar. This is, this part is not new, this is the eighth calendar that I've helped create, a little behind-the-scenes, and finally got to be here tonight for my first time. So, one hundred and seventy student contact days, one hundred and eighty-four teacher work days. New teachers, teachers new to the district do do three in-service days prior to the in-service workshop for returning staff. And then you can see there that there's five non-student days for PD and parent-teacher conference prep, and there's a parent-teacher conference prep for four hours in the fall and parent-teacher conference prep for four hours in the spring.
To continue on with the policy, four workshop days prior to that first day, one end-of-the-year professional day at the, that last day, then we don't start school until after Labor Day, and then we have a minimum of four K through twelve family conference days to fall and to spring.
Okay, and then some more basic parameters. There are no school on Labor Day. The two days in October, it's, I think it's usually the third weekend, Education Minnesota Holsa Professional Conference, and then Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving. And the board policy also calls out a winter break of being at least seven days, and then we do not have school or staff work on Martin Luther King Junior Day or Memorial Day.
And then, so when we look at the calendar design team, it is comprised of many individuals and groups, so students, parents, administrators, teachers, liaisons, Wendy, Dr. Belmont, just a great group coming together to provide some input, seek clarity from our community, and make sure that we're representing what is, what is really important about coming to school and each year.
So, the board might not be surprised, I, this is the first time I've really been engaged in this process. There is no definitive research around what is the optimal calendar for students. There's a lot of conflicting research, so it was, it was nice to bring multiple perspectives into this team. It was interesting for me as one of the co-facilitators, Ms. Drugi, to hear how people have different ways at coming at different conclusions and hopes, whether from the student, parent, staff, or various roles within the staff. So these are recommendations that were kind of vetted out through all of those different roles, and so they're increasing uninterrupted weeks, that was probably our top and most prevalent recommendation, is prioritizing momentum as much as possible and decreasing transitions as much as possible. Early intervention opportunities for parent partnership, I know as an elementary principal, it was, it felt awkward sometimes to facilitate goal conferences with families in November. So that's, so that trying to find those chances for early partnership whenever possible. No in-person school on Election Day, it was another identified priority recommendation, and then to do have some blended learning days. We have, our data's pretty clear, so Director Aftedal, who's in charge of CISA, we used to spend upwards of two hundred thousand dollars on subs to help professionally development our teachers within the instructional days. Our sub-fill rate possibilities and our staffing challenges do not allow for almost any of that work to occur, so if we can have the opportunity to have some time freed up, where students can be engaged in some learning, however, not during, not in the building, so our staff can get some professional development work done as well, that was, that was a charge brought from our team. And then, yeah, a full two weeks break for winter break was another challenge that the, that our team members brought to us. So Wendy, do you want to, he helped kind of synthesize some of these numbers, yeah?
So, being a high school math teacher, right, we, anytime we can throw in some extra mathematical statistics, I was very excited to do that. A lot of feedback that we got this year was people were very frustrated with the, like, two and three-day weeks, and so I would say like our number one priority was trying to get to as many four and five-day weeks as possible, and so you can see the numbers for yourself there, we have with this calendar compared to, so for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five calendar compared to the current one that we're in, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we were able to increase the five-day weeks by twelve and a half percent, and you can see we reduced the two and three-day weeks. And so, and then what we also did was we added two blended learning days, one each semester. And then by moving conferences to be with the MEA week, that's the reason why we were able to increase those five-day weeks and reduce the two and three-day weeks. All right, so here's a snapshot of the calendar. Fall conferences and spring conferences are scheduled both to be in the sixth week of each semester. There is a blended learning day on Election Day, like Chris just mentioned, so that we do not have people coming in to vote in our schools and have students in our schools. Spring break will be the last week of March into the first week of April, and then graduation will stay on that, that Friday after the last day of school.
And this is just a chance for us to publicly acknowledge the work that was done, a ton of work behind the scenes, and so many people have played an important role in that, so we're grateful for that and feel, it's a team effort.
Thank you. Board members, comments and questions? Director Chester.
I just found it interesting that at the beginning it calls out like the certain days that they're not going to be instruction and that there's designated winter break, but there's nothing that says that there's a designated spring break. That was at the beginning, I didn't, it was like, so that's optional.
A lot of districts that don't have spring break.
I would say it's not optional, but if you ask a teacher that just made it through January and February.
This January and February.
But anyways, I did not see it in the policy. I'm looking at some people that are, that have scoured those much more closely than I have, but I did double-check, it did not call out spring break.
Yeah, I was, I just, that's because it's upon us, that it's like, I noticed it was like absent.
And my niece and nephew's district in southern Minnesota does not have a spring break, so it's definitely not a, yeah, it's not a state requirement, anyway.
Interesting.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, don't, don't, buddy, I love spring break.
I'm wrong, yeah. No, and then I just appreciate the, listening to the many voices and, you know, wholeheartedly agree about not having instruction in person on Election Day, because, because we've done so many modifications to make our buildings safe that this is just, makes sense. And just as a working parent, I do appreciate the five-days offer since this gathered, because it makes it easier on the childcare part, so, that's all.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just comment.
Or comment? Director Connor?
Yes, thank you for this. I also liked the collaboration of you, listening to many different voices had input into this calendar. I assume you also, yeah, I know you did that email, where the parent was concerned about how late spring break was, I think it was for twenty twenty-four, so, moving on, you will probably take that into consideration for the twenty-five and twenty-six year calendar?
The email and question was wrong. The dates were incorrect on that information.
There was some assumptions made in the email about when the state high, the spring sports contests start, but it was, we like to hear from anyone that has kind of some opinions about what's best for them.
Yeah. It was off, but yeah.
Director Miller?
Yeah, just to that point, I see that the spring break is one week different next year versus this year, but I believe by my week count, it's approximately the same, it's like the thirteenth week. If he hasn't done that math, I don't know, anyway, it looks like it's pretty essentially the same.
Kind of on the count.
I was, I was literally just doing that, I said, so, I have a, I thought of this this year when we were out for, for the conferences, and on slide seven, one of our team recommendations was under early intervention, continue conferences in person, virtual. So I'm just going to, this is a discussion point, I'm open, we're in a school district, I'm here for learning purposes, but has there been any conversation about the, of the ongoing continuation of in-person conferences? The reason I say that is, when I was a small kid, conferences were about the only time my parents ever spoke to the teacher and had any interaction. Nowadays, we have Schoology, we have ParentView, we have CISA, we have emails, I, most of my kids' teachers, if I ping them, they'll call me in the evening or whatever. Honestly, I don't think we went to very many, we didn't have any conferences, we had a couple of virtual things scheduled, which we did from the hotel we were out of town at, you know, it's, I, so I'm curious if that's been explored or thought about as we move forward down the future. I totally understand access-wise, there's, there's elements of our community that probably value and need that, and I don't want to deny that at all, I'm just curious if that's a conversation that's starting to occur.
Yeah, there is emerging research around, around that, so it's less about should there be, so, just to clarify, were you asking about the in-person versus virtual option?
Well, we take, we take six days out of our calendar, three, you know, fall and spring, and I'm just beginning to wonder, you know, if those are absolutely the same necessity they used to be ten, fifteen, twenty years ago?
So, just to your point, with the access of information now, there's a lot more research and thought, both internally and externally, about the, the way conferences are handled, and, and more specifically, the, the tone of less of like a parent's coming to receive a report about the current reality for the student, and much more about collaborative problem-solving. And that sometimes does come with more, asking our staff to be more strategic with where they're spending their time during the, those conferences.
Yeah, I mean, you go in for a traditional conference, they have ten, fifteen minutes, you know, they're going to give you a breakdown of your kids, and in that timeframe, I don't know that I always have time to generate the questions I want to ask and stuff, yet during the course of an ongoing semester, you know, I'll think of something and I might email the teacher and get a thoughtful response back, and we engage, and, you know, I don't, Wendy and I'd be at University of U here, stuff, too, you know, if teachers are starting to question the validity of sitting around for eight hours at the school, you know, waiting on a stream of people coming through, or maybe not, I don't, maybe they don't even make all the appointments anymore, I don't, I don't, it's, I'm not suggesting anything tonight, I'm just throwing it out for conversation, curious about it.
I mean, I will say that I think that the time that we have allocated, allocated, a hundred percent the elementary teachers have said that they, they need that time. The other thing is, like, I, when teachers are sitting there, and they might not have a person in front of them, but if they know that we schedule at the secondary now for conferences, so they can, that's an opportunity to send emails and make phone calls, and so that is like parent reach-out time, and so I think that, I wouldn't say that like it's, I wouldn't say it's wasted time, you know, I would say that that time is still very necessary, and, yeah, we should definitely be looking at like what, maybe what are some other neighboring districts doing that's, that's different, but I guess the one other thing is, I put my like union hat on for a second, right, like, does it really ever come off? But this fits, this calendar fits the current contract language, right? And so, like, that's, that's why we're bringing it this way, and then if, if contract language changes and we develop some other models, maybe through like a task force or like a committee, then definitely that can be explored and maybe it could be, could be modified. But I, I really, I will say that I know that teachers are for sure. But I, I really, I, I will say that I know that teachers are for sure making contact with families that aren't able to come in during that time and we are using that time.
Okay. And then the last, going way back to the beginning, uh, 170 student days, uh, scheduled in this, um, what, how does that meet the state requirements for, for, uh, for instruction time? What's our windows, just for mine and general knowledge?
Yeah, the, um, so state requirements are down to the minute. And so it does have to do with our school days and then some of those decisions that were made, but generally speaking, we're, we have a pretty significant cushion right now. Um, please don't quote me, but like something like three to five days over membership minimums, maybe a little less at the secondary level, a little more at the elementary level because of our day schedules. We're aligned.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Any other? Dr. Earl?
Thank you, Chair Hume. Uh, yes, I would like to thank you all and the committee, um, cause I know you guys put a lot more time into this probably than we realize and lots of conversation and energy. And, um, I really appreciate pulling together, um, you know, students and families and staff for input because it didn't, it didn't always happen this way. And I think, you know, we, I know this board values making sure that, you know, voices are heard as part of our process, so that's awesome. Um, I think we also need to keep in mind that we are here for our students. Um, you know, we need to think about how change in any way could impact student learning. Um, and, you know, had some back and forth questions with Dr. Belmont, um, and the data that I was looking for just wasn't there. I can provide some context in ti, in terms of why we shifted away from the week long MEA initially to the, the system that we have right now, um, where conferences, we have the, the week, it's like the first week, part of the first week of November wrapped around election day for conferences. Um, you know, at the time, the staff input, um, was that conferences really didn't suit our students. Um, you know, right now quarter one ends just after election day. After that we have, um, two weeks later, we have, um, we have conferences, quarter three ends tomorrow and we just had conferences two weeks ago. Um, and the recommended calendar change would move conferences up three, um, three weeks earlier in the semester. Back in, you know, but when we made this change, uh, the feedback that I was hearing is that, um, teachers shared that they didn't really have a full sense of who their students are, um, respecting Dr. Belmont's, you know, perspective of elementary. You know, we also have middle school and high school, um, teachers to think about and students. Um, and what I heard at the time was that there seemed to be little to discuss, um, in terms of, you know, where the student is, do I really know my student? Do I know what their needs are? Whereas, you know, having conferences in November, you know, obviously there's a longer, we have a three additional weeks for teachers to get to know their students to see, okay, the first month of, of school, the student didn't turn in any homework, you know, they, you know, then they kicked in and now they're fine, but okay, we have another student that's kind of, um, not doing their work. Other feedback was that elementary students, um, had just acclimated to school routines and behaviors and following MEA, they would have to relearn all of that and teachers were very frustrated by that. Now, based on the, you know, the questions and answers, um, I understand that many tools were used to create this calendar. We didn't use any of our own data to compare, you know, engagement of families with that, the MEA conference week versus engagement of families during the November conference week. Um, you know, what, how do we know that this change of moving back to a week, um, at MEA is really going to help our students? I don't know that we know that answer. As far as the reasons why we moved away from week, a week of, of MEA, um, none of those reasons have really changed as to my knowledge. I mean, unless, unless this group sees differently.
Well, one thing that hasn't been mentioned yet tonight is that, uh, the elementary school curriculum for reading.
Okay.
Is based on like four and five day weeks. And so when they have the partial weeks, it, it makes it a struggle with, um, with the, with the curriculum. So that hasn't been mentioned yet. The other thing I guess I would say is that, um, with emails and Schoology and synergy and cell phones, communication like doesn't stop after those conferences like in October, right? Like it goes the whole year, you know? And so I, I don't see it as like, it's just these two times and it's kind of one and done. I mean, uh, Sunday was always my day to call home and what, like I'd watch the Viking games and make phone calls and sometimes catch a parent at a Viking game. And so I think that like, I really think that what we heard super loud and clear was getting as many continuous blocks, like full four and five day weeks. Um, and by moving the conferences back, um, we, that allowed us to gain a couple of weeks right there and get rid of a couple of those really small weeks.
And I appreciate that Wendy, I do. Um, I do want to say though, the flip is true, right? Communication never stops. So whether we have, you know, conferences in October or November, right? Parent, teachers can still be reaching out to families in October, whether we have a week of MEA or not. There are, we are one of either none, no, no other districts or only a small handful that actually do the week of MEA. That's the other thing. It's not the standard across the state. And because of this week of MEA that's being proposed, we now have a two-day week after winter break, which, um, again, going back to feedback, what the last time we had a two-day week following winter break, people were very frustrated, right? Because the people who are going to go away and not, you know, not bring their kids back are going to be gone. Um, absenteeism, whether we're talking about students or staff, right? Those two, the two-day weeks are pretty much lost. So we're kind of trading off, right? The ability to have a solid winter break where, you know, there is no shortened week. Um, and the poor teachers are frustrated with kids that, you know, clearly whoever shows up in school, you know, what kind of state of mind are they going to be in the classroom in terms of being ready for learning? I just really feel like the trade-off. And, and I mean, it just, it doesn't, it, if we had data, if we had data that we had looked at to compare our week of MEA to our, our November conferences, I would feel a whole lot better about making this change. And, and I'm just not, I, I just can't, I can't see supporting this calendar as it is because everything I've heard, um, you know, again, it can go one way or the other, but what we are here for is our students. And having, and, and having the, the calendar aligned to the contract is about the adults. And I'm concerned about our students. And, yeah.
I would like to chime in because as a, a parent thinking of our students, I know my students that I have are challenged with the, with the free, with two days of school, three days off, and then two weeks later having two, three days of school and then a week off. And, and the transition time and the behaviors that happen with that, that shortened time is, is there and it will, and it'll be amplified. They're shortening it by having fewer disruptions in that. And regardless of coming back from a winter break and having two days, it's not going to be any different than that Monday. Cause students are going to come back with, with, I've been on break and now I have to readjust to school. Monday and Tuesday is going to be the same as Thursday and Friday.
Also, what about the, um, the PBIS element for elementary and having, you know, the teachers have worked so hard to have the students learn, you know, those school behaviors. And then following a week of MEA, basically the feedback was, yeah, we had to start all over with the students and reteach them.
These are exactly questions that we wrestled with on our committee. Um, a couple of just clarifications. Um, the, um, because of the, the policy-supported parameters, we wouldn't be able to swap those days in October to fill those two days. So the two week of, um, winter break was a hope for the design team, but we weren't able to, um, move anything that's in place on the calendar that you see in front of you because of conflicting parameters. So if we did move that MEA, it wouldn't be a swap for the winter break.
Can't have conferences on December, January 2nd.
That'd be tough.
Yeah. I do however, appreciate the blended learning. Um, I, I think the blended learning is a great, a great concept and it'll give the flexibility that, that you mentioned and also the election day. I mean, it's so important, that safety and security for the students, you know, that we are able to not have school on election day, um, has been a really nice change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And I had just a couple. I actually wanted to ask about the blended learning days because I think it was pretty apparent that the first, explicitly says the first one is aligned to election day. Was there, what was, I'm just curious to better understand the rationale for the timing of the May blended learning day. Again, I have thoughts, but.
So, um, a couple of things with that is it gets to be, um, kind of a long stretch going from spring break, or excuse me, yeah, spring break until Memorial Day. There's no days off in between. And so by adding a blended learning day in there, there's been some years, um, in past calendars where we had, like we needed to stretch out the calendar by one more day because of trying to end school on a Thursday to have graduation on a Friday. And so we actually put the Friday before Memorial Day as no teachers, no students, just to have, we needed a spacer in there to like stretch it out a little bit. Um, but this year, the way the calendar falls for this, we didn't have any kind of days like that. I mean, by having that firm start of like after Labor Day and then trying to end on like that Thursday with the graduation on the Friday, when you have those bookends like that, like Chris said, even if we moved the conferences to November, it wouldn't help us with the, the piece in January. Um, like we've tried everything. It's almost like Jenga. We've been moving the pieces around and, um, it does, that wouldn't have, that wouldn't have changed it. But, um, yeah, I, I think now that we have had some blended learning days this year and I think, I think people will be excited about having those in the future calendar.
I have a couple of teachers in my house, as you know, so I was assuming the answer you gave was exactly the one I was expecting, that that stretch from spring break to the, to Memorial Day is really rough for everyone. And a, a mental health day with blended learning is, that's probably a good time for it.
Yeah. And that adding that day or the four, it just, that when we, um, when we're analyzing our attendance data for whatever reason, and, um, it does vary school to school or age level, when, when people are, when students are away for, um, four days or more in a row, that's when we see some big attendance dips on that, that like Director Earl's point that, that resetting the school seems to happen at four and, and a lot less at three or of course two, the traditional weekends. So, yeah. Interestingly enough, when we add more than the four, the data doesn't look all that different, but when we seem to hit that four or more, the regrouping is more challenging. So we keep.
I ask a point of clarification on the blended learning while we're on the subject. Is it open to, um, flex if, let's say it's something, you know, in, uh, um, whatever, one of the winter months, we have a unnatural storm spans and are we able to end it being a blended learning and bring it back to normal day of learning?
Oh, that's a good, good question. I've been learning a lot about those.
Or maybe there wouldn't be, it is a day of instruction, right? So maybe there wouldn't be a need to do that.
Yeah, so current statute and our policy calls for five e-learning days that can be used for weather related reasons. And then, um, blended learning days are afforded because we are an online provider. Uh, we can add those proactively into the, into our calendar. So, um, some ways the same and some ways different. So, um, we're not able to use them reactively.
Well, as I said, I guess it wouldn't even work because it, it's not exactly a non, it's not a non-instructional day. So I was thinking that if we had, rather than God forbid, had to go another day in June or something, you know, we could take that day, but we wouldn't function for that because it's already instructional.
It's already an instructional day.
Good question.
Right. All right.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I think you already addressed my final question, but the design team recommendation slide, the very last bullet point is the part about the two weeks for winter break. And I think Wendy talking about the bookending piece, I think is why that's, um, still more aspirational than anything. That be accurate? Yeah, thought so.
I mean, we did talk about like if we, what if we changed the contract language around the conferences now? Like how would, you know, how would we do that?
Right.
And then you could make it so that we wouldn't have to come back for those two days. I did look up, I have all the calendars starting in 2015, 2016, and we've had three different times where we've had two days of school attached to either the, the start or the end of winter break. Um, and so, I mean, we'll see what happens in, you know, the next round, but, um, I just, yeah, I just want to reiterate that like moving the conferences wouldn't necessarily help us with that winter break.
Sure, of course, of course. Thank you. All right.
Some of those comeback days have ended up being snow days because of cold and snow.
Yeah, how true. But then we didn't have school today because we got a foot of snow, right? I know this has been, I, I really appreciate all the work that you and the committee has done. I know no matter what the calendar is, I was just talking to my wife about this earlier tonight, no matter what the calendar is, it's not going to please a hundred percent of everybody. So I, I think we just have to accept that, you know, whatever calendar recommendation, if that's, if that's what we feel is, is the best outcome, then knowing that we want to satisfy as many people as possible and provide the best possible outcomes for our students and our staff and our families. And so that is where I will leave it for now, I think. So, thank you.
Can I just say one more thing? I mean, I just really want to say thank you to Chris because I've, like I said, I've done eight, seven calendars now and hopefully we'll finish, they'll allow me to work on the eighth one. Um, and this has been the most collaborative process that I've had with my four different superintendents over the past eight years as president. And all of the, they, they've been great. That's nothing against the others, but I think that this approach was definitely much more bringing people in. And I also brought the calendars back to like the BEA executive board, got feedback from them.
That's.
And so we've tried very hard to make, make a calendar that we do think fits students' needs with curriculum and also teacher and family needs.
Thank you. That's, that's really good to hear. I appreciate the collaboration, definitely.
I do too. It's very important.
Thank you. All right. Next, um, do board members have reports about board, oh, committees, appointments and school assignments? So we'll start with legislative committee. I believe you had a few updates to share this evening.
Um, we had our committee meeting on Tuesday, this is Tuesday, the 21st, um, which contained more of an update from my, um, marching on the hill, if you will, with our legislators. Um, and very important, thank you to, um, Jamie Kenny for setting up all of those appointments. It went really smooth. So, um, met with, um, nearly everybody that was available to meet, um, but then had a few, um, people who weren't available to meet and, um, let me pull that up quick here. So I met in person with Senator Pratt, Senator Port, Representative Burke, Representative Ryer, Representative Bierman and Representative Hanson. I did make stops at each of the offices of Senator Carlson, Senator Quaid and Representative Tabke and dropped off our legislative information. I was allowed or permitted anywhere from 10 minutes to 30 minutes to meet with people and had wonderful conversations. Um, all of them were very favorable of our legislative platform and agenda. I did emphasize how much we appreciate and thank them for wanting to, to initiate free lunch for all students and re-emphasize the ramifications of that. That could be a financial crisis to every single district, including ours. And that do they, are, one, were they aware of that? do they, are, one, were they aware of that? And then, two, what is their plan? And I did hear from all of them that they are aware of it and that they are trying to figure out what the, what that other measure would be, you know? So, is it filling out the form? I don't think they understood the intensity of the filling out the form. Or, or, well, and actually, for Senator Pratt, he was unaware of how much of a financial implication. Because I think when the, they approved some temporary relief funding for the compensatory regarding lunches, it wasn't, it was, it wasn't due to the fact that nobody filled out the form, it was due to the fact that we saw, every district saw a reduction because we offered the free lunch. But now that'll be in perpetuity, what's the incentive to fill out the form? And so, I don't think they understood then what that greater number would, going to be for every single district. And so, that was helpful. And I did hear continued support for our exemption. One had a, a question that they would still, like, they agree and they understand that we want flexibility and, at the same time, when it comes down to decision-making, there might be still some preference for having to go to capital. But that was only one.
Go to capital.
The, the excess funds once debt has been paid, the sale of a building, that, that any excess revenue after debt has been paid, that, that some of that flexible, flexibility to the board to decide that some of it should still be earmarked for capital. But all in all, I think, a good time. I was there, it was like not, I mean, and enough time to walk between one building to the next, but I was there 10 to 1. So, I think the other emphasis, I would say, is I would encourage fellow board members and community members next year to participate. I noticed other districts had more in numbers, and sometimes numbers speak in addition to the content you bring. So, just highly encourage that as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much for going and for representing us.
Yeah.
And glad you had nicer weather than when Dr. Battle and I testified back in, whenever that was, January, February. It was all snowing that day. Thank you. Is there a policy committee report?
There is. We met this past Tuesday.
We met this past Tuesday, and we're kind of hitting a regular cadence with policies. So, we're thinking that there'll be more manageable bite-sized chunks of policy that we'll be going through. The next time we meet is Tuesday, April 25th at 5:00 in the boardroom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there a negotiations committee?
The negotiations committee has not had the occasion to meet nor has anything scheduled at this moment, so, no, there is no negotiations committee report.
All right, thank you. Any other board appointment reports or school assignment reports? Director Connor.
From the AMSD, we, that met on March 3rd. Our speakers were Senator Kawazinski and Lori Pryor. And mostly what their agenda was, was to discuss questions and comments on student behavior because they're getting, you know, it's getting a little out of hand and it's entering some very troubling times for a lot of school districts for student behavior. So, they just wanted input on whatever anyone could, and discussed it and whatever input anyone had on suggestions of how we can curtail that, of course, without always suspending people, you know, suspending children, students, rather. So, that was the main point of view. And so, they asked for teachers' point of view, students' point of view, and they also talked about this year's budget and the 17.5 million surplus, including the inflation, which includes the inflation, otherwise it would have been 19. They discussed this year's bills, universal lunches, one-hour sick pay time for 30 hours, they're going to increase that for students, and then, oh, and licensing teachers for student shortage. That means making it easier to license teachers for student shortage. These are just things that they're proposing that are on the books. And also, increased prep time for teachers from five minutes, every 25 minutes to five minutes or every 17 minutes. They discussed, they mentioned they wanted to approve employee healthcare insurance and propose education funds that offer more college credits in high school, which we're already working on. That concludes my report for AMSD.
Thank you very much. Always appreciate your reports. I think next, unless there are any other last call for reports? All right. We'll move on to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve the academic calendar for 2425, presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you.
Welcome again, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board. On behalf of our committee, I'm asking the board to consider approving the academic calendar for 202425.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So, moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mursal. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we are being asked to approve United Health Group as the stop-loss insurance provider and UMR as the third-party administrator to process claims for the district's self-funded medical plan, presented by Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board, Dr. Belmont. Under the Health Insurance Transparency Act, or otherwise known as HITA, districts are required to go back for bids for their medical insurance every two years unless agreed upon by the largest unit, representative of the largest unit, to where you could extend that up to three to five years. So, that's kind of the window. We don't really have that opportunity at this point because our current third-party administrator, Preferred One, was acquired by United Health Group. So, at the end of our healthcare plan this June, we will no longer have a third-party administrator. So, we did have to implement the HITA process. Through that process, we went out for RFPs. We received, oh, if I recall, seven, maybe eight. I'm getting a little bit late here. Seven vendors provided initial offers. We reviewed that with the benefits committee when the offers came in. They suggested that we go back out to five of those vendors and get their best and final offers. Part of that process also was some of the responses that we got from the vendors didn't really match up with what we were asking for. So, not only were we looking for best and final, we wanted to give them an opportunity to clean up their bids, make sure that aligned with what we were looking for so that we could truly make sure that we were bringing forward the best offer for our medical plan. So, that was with United Healthcare. Again, that's for our stop-loss insurance. Stop-loss insurance is, the district is self-funded, but when we have high claims of over $225,000 plus, that's where your stop-loss insurance comes in for each one of those claims. Over the past few years, as you recall, when we do all of our insurance increase meetings, we have been under, underfunding our stop-loss portion close to $1 million a year. So, that is one of the major drivers in the increase for the fees. Not going to go into everything, we're getting late into the hours, but it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approves United Healthcare Group as the stop-loss insurance provider and UMR as the third-party administrator to process claims for the district's self-funded medical plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So, moved.
Moved by Director Mursal, seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stacy.
Yep.
And then, the final item on our agenda this evening is to adopt the Open Facilities Resolution, presented once again by Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Yep. Bringing you tonight, I'm not going to read through the whole resolution, you have that available to you, an updated, not a recommendation, updated resolution, thank you, updated resolution from our 2020 resolution for a couple of different reasons. No longer do we have the River Ridge property. We have language both for Sutrel and NW Savage that related to COVID in the times. Also, we have legislation in, up at the state level at this point in time. So, we met the last meeting in a workshop to kind of say, yeah, let's go back, let's update our resolution. Heard from the board very clearly that we wanted to possibly change the language both around our outlots as far as removing, that we wanted legislative action to, to occur, take that off before we possibly would sell. Also, with our Sutrel property, that we wanted to pretty much limit that to leasing at this point in time. And I do apologize that it took so long to get this posted, but this was the wrestling that I had back and forth with our attorney over this as they reviewed the, the information. Let me speak first to Diamond Head Lots. It wasn't real clear that we did not use bonds at any point in time for the entire property. So, to take that away, if you were to even sell portions of the outlots, then you would be completely committed to turning that and paying off or putting it back into the bond, okay? And, and so, since we didn't have that a clear path, that that wasn't the case, he, his recommendation was, leave it in there. Just leave it in there, it isn't going to hurt you. The piece around Sutrel, this is where, I'm not going to get into the grammar terminology, but he said resolutions are action languages. You, you use language that implements action, not restrictions. And with the resolution that you, or the, the legislation that we currently have, you want your resolution to be as open-ended as possible as you can. Take the action with that. You are not committing yourselves or future boards to accept any offers on Sutrel to where you have to sell. There is a process that would still have to be implemented, but at least you're aligning the language for all of your properties that the resolution will cover. That was his recommendation. Again, wrestled, said, well, what if we word it this way? What if we word it this way, like I know a law? And he said, no, he kept coming back, no, you, you, this is about the best I can do. And you'll notice, we did change a little bit at the end of Sutrel compared to the other two. Not a lot, but a little, to try to meet the desires of the board with that language. We're bringing to you this updated resolution. It has been thoroughly vetted by our attorney, and that's where I'll hand it over to you, Director Hume.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this item?
So, moved.
Moved by Director Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? Director Alt.
Thank you. So, Chair Hume, correct me if I'm wrong, when we were in workshop, this board landed on leasing Sutrel and leasing or selling MW Savage.
Definitely the latter. I don't know that, in thinking back through the conversation, I don't know that we had full agreement from the full board on lease-only, or lease or flexibility, because I heard bo, I heard board members saying both during that conversation.
Right.
Okay. I guess I heard it differently, but, um, okay.
Any other?
Well, I think, if, the, the language with, with Sutrel says, in the event that the board may decide to do that. So, I, I think, I think that was the, the big difference between MW, the language for MW Savage, where it just says, you know, we'll lease, and then when, almost kind of like, when the board decides to sell MW Savage, then that lease would terminate. Where in Sutrel, it says, in the event that the board may decide to do that.
Right.
So, so I think it's still, it's still, it's very, it's flexibility, but very non-committal.
No, definitely. And I guess my, my biggest concern was, and, and again, I had heard things differently. Chair Hume, you were listening differently than I was, and I respect that. That, just my initial take was, it sounded like staff was coming back with kind of the legalese of a, of a, you know, of what, what's going to work for the attorneys versus where we actually had landed. And you're telling me that's not the case. It wasn't about the flexibility, it was more about where I thought we had landed versus what was coming to us.
Got it, got it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I remember last time I was mentioning about just having the flexibility and then we just kind of boiled it over as she mentioned. Yeah, but...
Thank you. All right. If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I believe this concludes our regular business meeting. I just want to say, thank you, everyone. I know it's been a long night with lots of robust conversations. I appreciate everybody taking the time to prepare and to participate. So, thank you. Have a good evening, and we are adjourned.